Good evening and welcome to the weekly Lawrence City Commission meeting. Want to take a moment to welcome everyone here this evening. I also want to make a request of everybody in this room and everyone who's listening at home. I know that tonight we're talking about some pretty severe cold weather, and I think it is incumbent upon us to make sure that we check on our neighbors, we check on animals, we check on everybody and everything, because it's going to get pretty bitter tonight. We would hate to lose anyone due to cold weather. So make the phone call, go next door and knock whatever it takes. I mean, just look after one another, because it's going to be pretty deck on bad. Again, welcome everyone this evening. The first item on our agenda are proclamations, and the first is a special proclamation. That is to proclaim Friday, January 9th of 2015 as Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. And I know that we have representatives this evening tonight. In fact, we've got a whole room of representatives tonight. We're glad to have all of you here this evening. Harry, are you first?
I think I'll go first. If that's okay with you, sir.
Sure, please.
All right. My name is Harry Harrington. I am a resident of Lawrence, Kansas. I'm also a member of the Lawrence Police Foundation, a co-founder of the Valor Project, which was created to recognize heroic actions of our Douglas County first responders. I'm also the founder of Ride for Cops. Ride for Cops is a national initiative that goes out to raise awareness for the dangers of law enforcement, and also to provide support to the families of our fallen heroes. I would like to applaud the decision of the City Commission today for this proclamation in support of the men and women of our law enforcement community. They risk their lives on a daily basis to ensure the safety of the citizens of Lawrence, Kansas. Currently in this country, our law enforcement officers are being unjustly villainized by the media and a small segment of our country. However, in my travels with Ride for Cops and with our local Valor events, I'm here to tell you that the majority of the public supports our law enforcement and the actions they take to protect the communities. For that reason, I again want to thank the City Commission for their decision. This is an appropriate action for you to take to show your support of the law enforcement community that protects us every day. I will finish my remarks real simply by thanking all the law enforcement agencies represented here today, and every man and woman that puts on a badge and goes out and risks their lives to protect ours. Thank you.
Thanks, Harry.
Mayor Amix, Commissioners, good evening. I'm Michelle DeRusso, and I stand here this evening in awe, surrounded by selfless men and women, overwhelmed by their commitment, service, and sacrifice for our community. Words cannot adequately express the respect and gratitude I have for these amazing individuals. A simple "thank you" seems meager, but it comes from the heart. So to them, I say, "Thank you for all you do. You are appreciated." The Lawrence Police Foundation, the Lawrence Douglas County Valor Program, and Ride for Cops encourage Douglas County residents to join us and take the time to show your support and appreciation for these men and women. They have no idea what dangers or difficulties each shift will bring. Routine is not in their vocabulary, but every day they show up to protect us, and now it's time for us to show up for them. Mayor Amix, I'm honored to introduce to you and the Commission these four agencies and their representatives here this evening. So bear with me, I'm going to try to acknowledge everyone that's joined us. From the Kansas Highway Patrol, Master Trooper Seabird; from the KU Public Safety Office, Chief Oliver, Officer Carpenter, and Officer Winn; from the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, Under Sheriff Martin, Deputy Benton, Deputy Montney, Deputy Rome, and Deputy Revel; from the Lawrence Police Department, Chief Khatib, Captain Fellers, Detective Cross, Detective Axman, Officer Finelli, Sergeant McKinley, Sergeant Rhodes, Officer Bishop, Captain Patrick, Officer Neff, Sergeant Hubble, Sergeant Starr, Sergeant Murray, Officer Haig—I hope I didn't miss anyone—as well as retired Captain Dan Affalter. Mayor, thank you for acknowledging their dedication with this proclamation this evening.
Michelle, Harry, thank you for your very kind words. And from the City of Lawrence and the Lawrence City Commission, I want to thank each and every one of you for the work that you provide for the safety of the citizens of our community, our county, the university, and our state highway system. I mean, it is a privilege for me to be able to read this proclamation. I have the greatest amount of respect of all the folks that are involved in law enforcement and the work that you provide for every citizen throughout our county and our state and our city of Lawrence. So I do know it's hard work. I do know that not only the dedication that you have, but the dedication that your families have also in making sure that you're always fit to do the job. I mean, it's a lot of work and a lot of sacrifice by a great many people. Thank you all very much, and I'd be honored to read this proclamation. It's a proclamation, "Whereas National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day (LEED) is an event sponsored by Concerns of Police Survivors Incorporated," which is COPS, "and other partnering organizations in support of law enforcement officers nationwide. And whereas the Lawrence Police Department, Douglas County Sheriff's Office, Kansas University Public Safety Office, and Kansas Highway Patrol provide a tremendous public service to the community, and whereas the Federal Bureau of Investigation reports that nationally, on average, over 50,000 officers are assaulted and over 14,000 officers are injured in the line of duty each year. And whereas, according to a study from the Badge of Life Organization, between 125 and 150 police suicides occur each year, and whereas the Officer Dion Memorial Page Incorporated reports that 117 line-of-duty officer deaths have occurred nationally as of December 2014. And whereas the Citizens of Lawrence are invited to participate in LEED and show their support for law enforcement in the community by thanking a police officer wearing blue clothing, shining a blue light from their home, or just sending a card of support. Now therefore, I, Mike Amix, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim January 9th, 2015 to be Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Thank you all very much for the dedication that you provide, again, for this community and throughout the state and throughout the county. Again, thank you from the bottom of our hearts." And I do have proclamations for the four agencies. Chief? Thank you.
Thank you.
Pleased to meet you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for coming, and make sure you stay warm tonight, okay? Okay. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, and all matters listed on the consent agenda are to be considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Are there any items on the consent agenda that a member of the Commission would like to have removed for further consideration?
No.
Okay. I would like item number two, the claims, just for vote. Are there any items on the consent agenda that a member of the public would like to have removed for further consideration? Okay. Hearing none, with the exception of item two, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item number two. The claims are made by Commissioner Shum, seconded by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Next item is item number two, which are the claims. They have claims in the amount. There's 335 vendors in the amount of $858,702.95. Any questions on those?
Moved.
Second.
Motion made in second for approval of the claims was made by Commissioner Shum, seconded by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. And we do have claims to four vendors on Rock Chalk Park-related items. This is in the amount of $15,669.42. Entertained a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Motion made in second for approval, made by Commissioner Shum, seconded by Vice Mayor Farmer. Any questions or comments? All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Passes 4-1. Mayor Amix in dissension. Next item on the agenda is the City Manager's Report. David?
Mayor, members of the Commission, happy new year.
Happy new year.
Happy new year.
You started off the meeting with a note to neighbors to take care of neighbors in the community, and continuing on that theme there. Had some success with our Safe Winter Walkways program. Megan and others have really picked up the media alert. Point out that 11 of the volunteers are members of our police department. So they give to the community in a number of different ways. So I think what we see here is, again, the community reaching out to help citizens in need. Of course, we hope we don't have a lot of snow, but when it comes, we'll be a little bit prepared along those lines. So, end with that.
Okay. Any questions, the City Manager, on the report?
No.
Well, I've got to believe, as we talked about yesterday, that if this is all the snow we get this winter, it'll be easy to get volunteers next year. It'll be a great job. Let's hope. Okay, we are on to the regular agenda. I would hope everyone would silence their cell phones so that we can hold our regular meeting. Again, I would like folks, obviously, to speak before the Commission on all items. I would ask that we keep our comments in the three-minute range. If we're going to run over, we're going to run over, and I won't throw a gavel at anybody. We'll be good tonight, okay? It's the new year, right? First item on the agenda then is to consider applicant appeal of the Historic Resources Commission's determination of denial for a proposed sign to be located at 900 New Hampshire Street. This is for the Marriott Town Place Suites. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, Lynn Braddock-Zoller, Historic Resources Administrator. The agenda item before you this evening is an appeal from the Historic Resources Commission determination that the proposed projecting sign to be located at 900 New Hampshire Street does not meet the intent of the downtown design guidelines, the design standards for the downtown urban conservation overlay district. The downtown design guidelines were originally adopted by the City Commission in 2001 and were revised in 2009. The guidelines are a development tool used to ensure compatible development in the downtown area. This is the downtown overlay district on your left. The bright blue line shows the district. It's basically bounded on the north by Sixth Street and the river, on the west by kind of mid-block between Vermont and Kentucky Street, on the south by South Park, and then on the east, Partial Way by Rhode Island Street, and then it goes to mid-block on New Hampshire Street. This is the project location shown in the orange-hatched area, with the blue being the entire conservation—I mean, sorry, the yellow being the conservation overlay district. And then this is Ninth and New Hampshire showing the project location. At their meeting on December 18th, the Historic Resources Commission reviewed the proposed projecting sign and approved the certificate of appropriateness for the sign, but found that, as proposed, the sign did not meet the downtown design guidelines. Specifically, the HRC found that the sign did not meet the guidelines shown here, and also identified in the memo in your packet. Typically, when a project doesn't meet the intent of the design guidelines, the applicant will work with staff, the Historic Resources Commission, the Architectural Review Committee, which is a subcommittee of the Historic Resources Commission, to find a solution to the project that will meet the goals of the applicant, but will also meet the overall intent of the downtown design guidelines. The HRC prefers to find workable solutions to unique circumstances rather than deny proposed projects. The applicant has indicated, in this case, that the need for signage for the opening of the hotel precludes working with the Historic Resources Commission on the design issues. The applicant is appealing the determination of the HRC in accordance with the Development Code. The City Commission is the final decision-making authority in determining whether a proposed project meets the downtown design guidelines. This is the proposed sign. It is a projecting sign. It's 15 feet tall and 4 feet wide, and a little bit plus or minus 8 inches thick. It's 60 square feet, the total sign face. The sign will be internally illuminated with routed push-through letters that are white This is looking at the building standing in front of the art center, looking to the northeast, and looking the opposite way from Ninth and New Hampshire toward the southeast.
Mayor, can I ask a question, please? Would you use your cursor or something to show where the proposed location of the sign is on the building?
Yes, I have that in the slide coming up.
Okay, pardon.
Okay, that's fine. This is what's to be the hotel entrance, the black area here. And this photo I put in because, at this angle, you can see part of the discussion was the change in wall planes that were to break up the mass of the overall structure. So you can see that a little bit here, and then also where the black portion of the building is at a different wall plane than the brick portion. This is the proposed location of the sign. It's not to scale, but it's kind of an approximation with the photo on the right and the applicant drawing on the left. It will be 15 feet from the ground and an equal distance between the window and that change in wall plane that we just looked at. The black line here shows approximately what that sign would look like on the building. And to zoom out a little bit further, kind of in relation, like we looked earlier, that black line is an approximation, and that's not to scale, but to show you what that would look like. The staff analysis for this project was a little bit challenging, because the sign does meet some of the downtown design guidelines. However, it did not meet that overall guideline of pedestrian orientation and the size of a sign being in scale and compatible with the storefront area of a building. The design of the building does not promote use of the installation of a sign at the corner due to the location of the main entrance to the hotel and the corner construction at the upper levels of the building. The City Commission has the authority and discretion to examine the whole situation or extenuating circumstances and approve projects that do not meet the letter of the guidelines. Multiple changes in wall plane and the design and use of the building can be taken into consideration when applying the guidelines. Staff is of the opinion that there are design solutions that fulfill the applicant's needs and the intent of the design guidelines, and that they should be pursued jointly by the ARC and applicant. Some options that you may consider this evening are: one would be to make a determination that the proposed projecting sign does not meet the downtown design guidelines—or does meet the downtown design guidelines, excuse me—and approve the sign, or make the determination that it does not meet the downtown design guidelines and deny the sign. Or you may make a determination that it doesn't meet the overall intent of the downtown design guidelines and refer it back to the Architectural Review Committee staff or the Historic Resources Commission. And with that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions that you may have.
Help, please. It was approved for a certificate of appropriateness. I presume that means the historical aspect of it was approved.
There are two different reviews for this particular project. The certificate of appropriateness is under Chapter 22 of the City Code, and it's because it's within 250 feet of a listed property. So it's a separate review.
But that deals with the historical aspect of it.
Correct.
And so that was approved by the Historic Resources Board. It's just that this sign is viewed as too big, I guess, from what I've read, to fit into the design guidelines.
It's the size and placement of the sign.
Okay. And then, in the design guidelines, the downtown design guidelines, does it take into consideration the overall massing of a building?
Yes. It talks about looking at the overall size and scale of the building and the massing of the building, but it also speaks to looking at that street-level facade and having the sign compatible with that, and that kind of goes toward that pedestrian orientation.
Okay. And then, if this were referred to the Architectural Review Board, what kinds of things might they do to bring it into conformance? Is it just a matter of reducing the size, or are there other elements involved in this that would make a change?
Yes, I think they could reduce the size and place it closer to the hotel entrance. If you noticed, and I'll go back, it's a little bit away from the hotel entrance. So just making it smaller is not necessarily going to lead you to the door of the hotel. One of the options that was discussed at the Historic Resources Commission was there's a canopy right over the doorway to have signage on that canopy. Other options that could be explored are wall signs or other projecting signs that are in a different location and perhaps smaller.
Okay, one last question, and we'll yield to whoever else. What size sign—what size blade sign would fit into the design guidelines? This is 4x15. What size blade sign would be approved?
I think it's going to depend on the design and placement. If the placement is closer to that black portion of the building, then you'd be looking at something that's a little bit lower, if you see right here where the window is. So you might be looking at something right here as opposed to this large sign right here.
And the idea there is it's not pedestrian-friendly?
Correct. The proposed sign is not typical pedestrian-oriented.
Thank you.
Okay, so, along with what Commissioner Shum was asking about, so the maximum square footage is 15 square feet?
Correct.
60.
And the maximum sign height is 5 feet, so it can be 3x5, is it?
Yes.
And this one is 4x15?
Correct.
And you say one of the suggestions was to move it closer to the door and put it above the canopy that exists above the door?
That's correct.
Okay. I don't know. It seems to me—okay, if I'm coming from the south, the location where it is right now is probably out a little bit farther so that people can see, you know, see where the front of the building is and pretty close to the entrance there. It's a pretty good stretch of street. You know, I'm not—to be honest with you, I think it works, but that's just me.
You're what?
I think the sign works.
How big is the sign on the corner of Seventh and Mass for the Eldridge?
I would have to look up the exact square footage.
It's bigger than 3x5.
Yes, it is. Historically, the Historic Resources Commission and staff have been more liberal with that size of sign. If it's placed on the corner of a building, there's some information about that in the packet of information, because there's a specific design guidelines that say larger signs can be placed on the corners of the building.
Questions or comments?
Are there any signs down Mass or in this district that are put out like this, where it's perpendicular to the building rather than flat on the wall?
We have projecting signs on Mass. Most of the time, they're smaller projecting signs rather than the large type of, like the 15-foot-tall sign. There is one historic sign that was—we had a reface done on it. I don't know if you've ever noticed the Kansas Sampler, but that was a sign that was left over from the '50s, and so they were able to reface that sign instead of removing it totally. So that is the only mid-block example of a sign that we have of this size.
One of the things that's said in the design guidelines is that it should not be used specifically for automobiles. Could you help me understand what are the design guidelines that would be for automobiles versus people? And how do you differentiate those?
That's one of the things that you'll get to work with this evening, looking at the downtown design guidelines. The guidelines are written so that they are to promote pedestrian-oriented construction, new construction and rehabilitation downtown. So they're looking at, for instance, the signage being compatible with the storefront facade. They're looking for signage typically placed in the transom area of signs. It promotes pedestrian sidewalks. It promotes the little landscape strips between the sidewalk and the street to give that safe pedestrian feel and that overall comfortable feeling of being a pedestrian in a downtown atmosphere. Automobile-oriented signs and traffic patterns are typically meant for an automobile at a certain speed to notice a sign, or like one-way streets are automobile-oriented to move traffic. So those types of things would be automobile-oriented versus pedestrian-oriented.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. Anything else, then?
That's it.
Okay. The applicant is here this evening?
We are.
The applicant?
Yeah. Where do you go first?
I'm Chuck Mackey or Charles Mackey. I'm a resident of rural Miami County, and I'm the operator and co-owner of the Town Place Suites by Marriott at 900 New Hampshire.
Okay.
And would you like me to give you a brief explanation?
Please, yeah.
Or you want to ask me some questions?
Sure.
Okay, great.
You've asked for the appeal, and that'd be great.
Well, the primary rationale that I would like to put forward as to why this is not only the appropriate place for the sign, but is the only place for the sign, goes back to our original application with the city when we were attempting to develop this hotel. Our original plan, that frankly, I was in favor of, was our entrance to the hotel being on the corner. As you can imagine, it's—you know, corner real estate is generally considered more visible, potentially more valuable, and especially with the glass storefronts, it was going to work, I thought, pretty nicely to attract patrons to the hotel. With taking the recommendation of city staff and the like, they informed us—which, again, we ultimately were in agreement with—which was that a corner entrance to the hotel would create quite a few traffic problems. Obviously, traffic backing up and/or trying to provide any off-street parking or off-street temporary parking for registration would be problematic at the corner, and so they suggested that we move the entrance back to mid-block. We did. You can probably also imagine that having your signage somewhere other than your entrance is also problematic from a traffic perspective as well as a convenience to the guest. One of the things that I might argue, if I was on the other side of the table, I might say, "Well, gee, people will figure it out. They'll figure out where your entrance is, but keep in mind we're a hotel. They don't have an opportunity to figure it out, because for the first two years, 95% of the people who stay with us will be staying with us for the first time ever. And for the entire life of the hotel, approximately 60% of the people that will be staying with us have never stayed with us before." So the idea, you pull down the street, you see the sign, you go to the sign. Now, that's just not my opinion. That's Marriott's opinion. You know, while we've developed eight Marriott hotels, they've obviously developed thousands of them, it was their strong opinion that we not separate the entrance from the sign. My own practical— So the idea, you pull down the street, you see the sign, you go to the sign. Now, that's just not my opinion. That's Marriott's opinion. While we've developed eight Marriott hotels, they've obviously developed thousands of them. It was their strong opinion that we not separate the entrance from the sign. My own practical experience is, you know, I have two hotels where, one of them, I had the bright idea of building a tower, again, for signage into it, and so it would have great visibility from the highway in Evansville, Indiana. And we ended up reconstructing our entrance because everyone that came to the hotel drove to the tower, saw the sign, tried to get in the hotel, and realized that that was a side entrance, and our actual front entrance was down the way. We actually had to reconstruct the hotel to design the signage so that people would actually go to our actual entrance rather than be attracted to the sign. You know, that's, you know, those are the practical reasons. I can, I can, you know, run through several other things, at least from my perspective. It is a large building. We have only two tenants planned for an entire stretch along New Hampshire, so there won't be any signage clutter, in my opinion. You'll have, you know, that singular sign, possibly one other closer to the corner, which again, would also be appropriate for their entrance as the retail, the retail tenant that we're currently just having discussions with plans their entrance to be on the corner, which would also be obviously more appropriate for a location for their signage. So those are, those are the, what I think are the overwhelming reasons that that's the appropriate place for the sign. But I'm happy to answer questions. I apologize that I wasn't here to hear the earlier presentation.
Questions to Mr. Mackey?
Could I ask one question?
Sure, please, bro.
Could you comment on the overall size of the sign, the four by 15?
Sure. Well, and again, the, we were, I just heard a little bit of the earlier presentation about the sign protruding from the building. It's not 15 feet. 15 feet is the height. It's only four feet is how far it comes off the building. The sidewalks in that area also, which I thought were nicely, nicely considered. You know, the sign is well back from the curb. So as far as, as far as that goes, that seems appropriate. The other thing, while 15 feet, I'll be the first to imagine when you think 15 feet, that, gee, that seems rather large. But when you compare it to the facade of the building and then you, and you put it up in the air, 15 feet is actually rather small compared to what we would typically put on a hotel this size. And I believe, if I'm correct, it's a foot or foot and a half less than we could theoretically done under sign, under the typical sign ordinance. Is that, is that correct? Yeah, if, had it been on the corner, it could have actually been a larger sign, I think is what I was told. I would swear to it that that's what I was told.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you. Was there other comment from the applicant? Anybody else in that group? Nope? Okay. Public comment?
Good evening, Commissioners. Dennis Brown, President of the Lawrence Preservation Alliance. LPA didn't comment on this item at HRC, but I was at the meeting of the Historic Resources Commission and observed the proceedings. Over the last year, I think HRC has been performing at a high level that this city should be proud of. Veteran members have settled in and understand their roles, and the three most recent appointments made by three different mayors have stepped right up and are performing very well. What do I mean when I say this? First, each commissioner wants every applicant to succeed and get their permit. Second, commissioners understand their different scopes of review and the threshold each applicant needs to cross in order to pass. And third, they perform their due diligence on each agenda item. On this item, if you refer to the minutes provided, there was absolutely no discussion on whether this proposed sign could pass Downtown Design Guidelines review. No gray areas, no room for interpretation. The five commissioners felt it does not pass. The lengthy discussion between the commission and the applicant involved commissioners trying to find some way that the applicant's team might alter the design placement so that it could pass review. The services of the Architecture Review Committee were offered to work with the applicant. LPA was disappointed when the applicant refused. We suspect that with the holidays and the short time until the hotel was to open, the applicant could not accept the timeframe. But I don't believe that the city was responsible for that short timeframe. HRC reviews signed proposals a number of times throughout the year. I'm at all the meetings. I know that's to be true. And they try to be consistent. They try to avoid creating precedent or playing favorites. One of the options before you is to direct the applicant to work with staff and the Architecture Review Committee to come up with a workable solution that will pass Downtown Design Guidelines review. And we still think that's the best way for you to resolve this, and we hope you'll choose that option.
Thank you, Dennis. Other comment?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Katie Walsh, and I represent only myself tonight. I also go to all the HRC meetings, and I have great admiration for the current commissioners. I just want to make a few points. I felt really bad for our new manager, the Marriott, because he was left in an awkward position and under a rush to get this sign through. I felt bad because this project has been going for a couple of years, and the architects know our downtown design guidelines very well. And I don't understand why they didn't design the corner so it could accommodate an illuminated sign. I felt like they put him in an awkward spot. Also, Marriott has a stellar worldwide record for historic preservation. They rehab and restore buildings all over the world. So surely, they've worked in historic districts before that have down, or design guidelines that you have to work with. I think the higher-ups of management needs to show some flexibility on sign placement to show their commitment to our historic downtown. I also wanted to point out that signage is important. Pedestrian-level signage is important downtown. But most travelers arrive at their hotel motel these days by GPS. Signs are important, but there are other ways to know where the entrance is. I think the bumped-out driveway, lighting, outdoor potted trees will send the message to guests and visitors where the entrance is. And then finally, I recommend that they be asked to go back to the Architectural Review Committee of the Historic Resources Commission to work out a good solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Any other public comment on this item? Back to the commission.
Okay, Lynn. Going through the staff report, staff says that on five points, you believe that it meets, you know, the downtown guidelines, which include the sign should be subordinate to the building's facade, protecting, projecting signs should provide a minimum clearance of eight feet between the sidewalk and service bottom of the sign. The projecting signs should be in no case beyond one-half of the width of the sidewalk. Okay? Can you tell me why that one is so important?
Why the width of the sign is so important? There again, it goes toward that pedestrian orientation, that pedestrian feel. If you look at a sidewalk when people are utilizing it as a pedestrian path, if there's something that projects over half of that sidewalk width, that's kind of a breaking point to make you feel like there's something on top of you. It makes it less comfortable.
And then you like the lighting of the sign because of the indirect source of the light? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then, you know, then it goes on to talk about whether they're wall-mounted, suspended on, fixed onings or projection. Signs must be placed in locations that do not obscure any historic architectural features of the building or obstruct any views or vistas of historic downtown, and it does all of that.
That's correct.
So the three things we're looking at are the size of the sign, which is the 60 square feet versus the 15 square feet. And then the large projection, projecting sign should be mounted higher and centered on the facade or positioned on the corner of the building. If I send somebody around the corner, I suppose, you know, a sign there on the corner, you know, that people would kind of figure it out. But it seemed to me that it ought to be closer to the entrance of the building. That's just me. Because I've got a little sign in front of my shop that kind of says, this is kind of where Mike's at. I think that's kind of important, but, and then shy, this, the other one was is that signs should subordinate to the building's facade, the size and scale. And we're saying that the 60 square feet is just way too big? Is that what I, is that what I read into that?
Well, it's subordinate to the overall massing and scale of the building, but it's not in proportion to the size and scale of the street-level facade. So it's looking at two different items with that guideline.
If this were on the corner, would it be allowed?
Most likely, yes. We have some large corner projecting signs. Hobbs at Seventh and Mass is a good example of a multi-tenant building that has one large sign on the corner with different entrances for people to get into different aspects of the building.
So on New Hampshire alone, we've got Berkeley Plaza. I'm just kind of summarizing all the signs I noticed. Brookly Plaza, which is a fairly large, typical pedestal, raised pedestal sign. Sunflower, Sunfire Ceramics, which is an old Phillips 66 sign, which is, exceeds the dimensions. Capital City's Banks sign at the corner, which exceeds the dimensions. The Spring Hill Suites sign and the major pedestal tower sign on New Hampshire. And the BF Goodrich Tire Store on Vermont. You know, there's just not a whole lot of signs to note variances from. I mean, that's all I could come up with as far as signs that seem to meet or exceed the total square footage of signs, sign footage in the downtown area. You know, I agree with Katie that most of the people arriving at this location are gonna probably use a GPS and more than likely, and for six months or a year, the coordinates of this place, since it's new, probably won't show up. And I think a sign is going to be important to the success of this facility so that people pull in and register. I know I use hotels on a fairly consistent basis, and I'd like to know where to pull in and check in and park my car. It's just kind of one of those things I like to do. It seems like putting the sign on the corner is a difficult proposition given that the actual entrance to that building there will be housing some third-party business, a restaurant or some of the locations. So I think that's hard. And then, and then the fact that we are trying to apply these pedestrian standards to what I believe is more of a vehicular access property, at least initially. Once people get there, they'll walk and they'll know where to go. So I'm just trying to figure out how we can relate how many waivers we've given or how many waivers we've allowed over time to the necessity to direct people to the proper location on a brand-new enterprise that I would hope is going to be successful. So I just bring those up. Those are the only signs that I saw in the area that seemed to break the three-by-five dimensions that are, you know, recommended by the city and, other than the one mentioned at the Eldridge House, which is slightly larger. So I don't see us having a flurry of deviations from the norm. And I feel like, you know, this sign needs to be in a location close to the entrance to the property, the building, or to the entrance of the building. And I believe the pedestrian nature of downtown is reflected pretty clearly in our Mass Street guidelines, which really have no deviations from the standard whatsoever. It's, other than Urban Outfitters and the Granada, which are using old, you know, marquee signs from the movie theaters. There's really very, we've stuck pretty closely to our guns on how we're going to sign our downtown area. And I feel like I've been pretty true to the standard. And I think, you know, HRC and the ARC have done a good job of trying to work with users. But for me, this is, this is about, you know, ease of use and access. And I don't think the sign is distasteful. And, you know, four by 15, you know, may be a little larger than we might like, but I'd like to be able, you know, given the face of this building is really in line with the art center, it's going to be hard to tell when you're at Ninth Street which direction ahead, you know. And I think it's important that people can see which way to go. So I mean, for me, a sign is important to be able to see in a vehicle, if at all possible, from the street.
Questions or comments above?
No, I mean, I wholeheartedly respect the downtown design guidelines. In fact, I was a member of the committee that put those things together quite a few years ago. This particular situation strikes me as being a little unusual. And it is a hotel, a new hotel. We haven't had any of those in my lifetime. People are going to arrive from out of town, most of them from out of town, I would presume 99%, by vehicle. What you don't want to have is people driving around the block or two or three blocks trying to find where they're supposed to locate. It is located across the street from a major parking garage, which is more vehicular activity than our other streets. So to me, it makes sense to try and get people on the property and get them located in a parking stall permanently as quickly as possible and not having them to move around. And that street, that section of the street is not as pedestrian-oriented as some of the, most of our other streets. That's my observation of it. Just because of the activities that go on there with the parking garage, the art center, and then the Stew Hotel. So I, you know, while it's a big sign in relation to the building, I don't think it's excessive. I mean, I think it's a practical sign. And I think that's what I'm dealing with, is trying to, trying to find a practical solution to this situation. So not, I think I can support it.
When I look at this, there are about three different things that strike me. One is that this is going to be used by vehicles, and we want safety. And we want a sign that they can see, and they can see easily so they're not distracted. And I know we have guidelines talking about pedestrians. We want to keep that as pedestrian-friendly as we can. But I think safety sometimes need to be looked into for the people that are dragging the cars. Second, it is that we talk about the Mass, and this is a tall building. It's on a shorter section because we're trying to break this up. But I don't think we should penalize them for making it look nicer. The other is that they wanted it on the corner, and this would have been okay on the corner, but we moved it to the center, and then we can't have the sign because it's not on the corner. So that seems to be almost like a catch-22 to me. And when you, when you talk about this, just practically speaking, you want a sign that's appropriate, appropriate in size. And I know the design guidelines are more important for Mass than they are for here. They're still important for here. But I think the size and shape of this sign, considering the fact that it's going to be more vehicular-oriented, and it's, would be appropriate on the corner. And the size of this building is such a large building, and people complained about the size, that I think there are some appropriateness to allow a sign like this to occur.
Well, you know, Mike, I too drove down New Hampshire Street a couple of times over the last couple of days. And if you ask somebody from out of town, put in Hobbs Taylor Lofts on Google Maps and drive there. And the only thing to identify Hobbs Taylor Lofts at its location is a sign like was proposed by a few members of the HRC right above the door. And, you know, I think of another business along kind of the New Hampshire Street corridor, Callahan Creek. And, you know, even being from Lawrence, I remember the first time I actually tried to find that place. And I knew, I knew it was somewhere. I just didn't, I didn't know where the hell it was. And so, I mean, I walked around, you know, looking for it. And I didn't know, I didn't know where to find it. I know, I know that sounds trivial and probably stupid, but, you know, I didn't know if it's on the back side or the front side. It just wasn't, if there was something hanging out that I could have seen when I was walking, I guess is my point. I, I think this is pedestrian-friendly because it's hanging off of the building. And if it were just placed on the building, there's a good chance that it could be, that it could be hidden a little bit. be hidden a little bit, and really not, and not pedestrian-friendly at all, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. The Capital City Bank sign on the corner of 8th and New Hampshire, I think, could be easily seen by pedestrians. The Hobbs Taylor Loft sign, if you're walking north downtown and you're looking on the east side of New Hampshire, you're not going to see that that's where Hobbs Taylor Loft is. You would see it if they had a sign similar to this one. So that's certainly, you know, taking into account my failure to follow instructions, apparently, and, you know, Hobbs Taylor Lofts. If we asked somebody from out of town to find that, and they were walking down Mass Street, I don't think that sign is very pedestrian-friendly. I think this one is. If we want to talk about navigating as pedestrian downtown, you've got to take in a couple of factors, line of sight being one of them. And sure, is this a little bit, you know, bigger than what the guidelines say? Perhaps. But my sense is, you're going to be able to see it. As a pedestrian, if you're looking for a place, that's certainly going to be important. So those would be my thoughts.
Well, one of the things that I do want to say is I believe that the HRC did a good job of following what the guidelines are, and that in the staff report, it does talk about the HRC conclusion that, you know, that this proposed sign does not meet the intent of the guidelines to promote pedestrian-oriented development in the overlay district. But one of the things it goes on to say is that it talks about that the hotel requires significant signage to guide visitors to the community, and so on and so forth. One of the things that it fails to recognize, that the first-floor use, you know, even though the sign, you know, if it's on the corner, you know, meets the guidelines and everything about it, one of the things that it doesn't do, it fails to recognize that the first-floor use of the corner will not be the hotel. And so it seems to me that if we can move this sign to the corner, and it meets the intent, or meets the guidelines, it seems to me that we're talking about the sign and whether or not it's appropriate at the location that the applicant has requested. I think that if it meets, if it meets the guidelines at one location on this building, it meets it on the location proposed. Is that the end? That's probably not the end you wanted to hear, but that's my summation of the deal.
As I mentioned earlier, I think this was a really big struggle for staff, because it is a very unique structure in our downtown. It's very modern design. I don't know that the design guidelines contemplated a structure of this type in the overlay district when they were designed.
Well, here again, that it would be easy for me, or it is easy for me at this point to make the determination that since the sign, if it were on the corner, and the size that it is, it would meet the guideline and would deserve us to approve the appeal, or approve the sign, that by moving it to mid-block, it still meets those guidelines, those downtown guidelines, and that we should approve the sign at the location requested. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have obviously three choices. We can make the determination that proposed projecting sign does meet the downtown design guidelines and approve the sign design. Two, as was stated in the report, that we can make the determination that proposed projecting sign does not meet the design, downtown design guidelines and deny the sign. Or make the determination that the proposed sign projecting does not meet the design guidelines and refer this item back to the ARC and the Design Review Subcommittee of the HRC. The staff and the ARC can work towards finding a design that meets the downtown guidelines. Anybody's choice, gentlemen. I think I know where we may be heading.
I would move that we accept solution one, to accept, to state that it does meet the guidelines based on the comments made here tonight.
Okay. We have a motion to, that we have made the determination that the proposed projecting sign does meet the downtown desired guidelines and approve the signed design as made by Commissioner Reardon. Do you hear a second?
Second.
A motion made in second. Is there any other questions or comments? Motion was made by Commissioner Reardon, second by Commissioner Dever. All in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks, Dennis. KT? Next item on the agenda is to authorize a right-of-way permit for the Here project contingent upon staff approval of a traffic plan and truck route plan. This is project number PW417. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Happy New Year as well. We have received a right-of-way permit application from the Here company to build an apartment complex approximately at 11th and Indiana, Mississippi. You all have seen actions and made actions on the appropriateness of that apartment complex, and those have all proved this is now starting the construction process to actually install some fencing and begin demolition of the existing structures. The applicant would like to begin construction on January 12th of this year. The scheduled completion of the project is July of 2016. They will submit a separate right-of-way permit in approximately a year, which we are considering as phase two of this project, which will be for the infrastructure, or the parking and roadway and sidewalk improvements. So this particular right-of-way permit will place a fence around the perimeter of the site. There will be no road closures associated with phase one of the right-of-way permit. There will be elimination of on-street parking on the east side of Mississippi for the duration of the property line of this project, as well as Indiana Street on the west side. The sidewalks on the north side of 11th, or excuse me, the south side of 11th, west side of Indiana, and the east side of Mississippi will be closed and be inside of the fence. Basically, the fence will encompass the perimeter of this property, including the right-of-way that is adjacent on Mississippi, Indiana, and 11th Street. They have submitted a pedestrian detour, which staff has reviewed and is compliant with the manual uniform traffic control devices. So they have met that obligation. We met with the Here group today, as well as their contractor, the Stevens Construction Company, to discuss a few of the items that are still remaining to be considered, and that's the truck haul route, as well as the traffic control plan. We are confident with what they've submitted for traffic control plan. The haul route, as they submitted, was not acceptable to the city, and we discussed alternate route with them today. They are appreciative of our suggestions not being from this area, and we've resolved that issue with them. They will be submitting those changes to us to review, to go along with this right-of-way permit as part of the approval process. The other piece with the haul route is they will be using the intersection of 11th and Mississippi to turn semis around. They'll come in from the north on Mississippi, and they'll have to make a 180-degree turn to back into the construction site. As part of the turning movement they have submitted to us would include them utilizing a portion of the KU drive approach to their lot into Memorial Stadium. They still have to gain approval from KU for that to be acceptable to us. And then once we have that, then we can approve that portion of the haul route as well. Your action tonight is to authorize staff, if appropriate, to issue a right-of-way permit to the Here group contingent on them submitting an appropriate haul route and traffic control And Jeff Heffernan, or excuse me, Jim Heffernan is here from Here. Jeff Johnson is here from the Stevens Construction Company, as well as staff, and Chris Storm, the design firm of land plan engineering. That will stand for questions.
Mark, again, what were the two things you said, the haul route, the final two things that they needed?
Yes, the haul route, they had suggested coming in off of Iowa down 9th Street. We didn't believe that they would be able to make that turn onto Mississippi Street. So the route that we are recommending would be to come from 6th Street down Tennessee, turn west on 9th Street, and south on Mississippi. We believe those turning movements can be accomplished and get them to their job site.
And what was the other one?
The other one was the traffic control plan, and we have that reviewed, and it is appropriate and compliant with standards.
Okay. Got it. Questions to staff? Okay, thanks, Mark. Public comment on this item?
My name is Brent Wagner, and I'm the president of the AEPI fraternity on 1116 Indiana Street, and also here representing the AGD sorority on 1100 Indiana Street. Both of our houses heavily rely on the street parking on Indiana Street. In total, we have 21 residents at 1116 Indiana and 40 residents living on, living at 1100 Indiana, but only have parking for 28 residents. Therefore, we've utilized 60 to 70% of the street parking along the west side of Indiana for, for give or take about 20 residents without parking spots. It appears that this project is taking away a majority of the street parking for our residents for the duration of this project. All other properties surrounding the construction project have sufficient parking for their residents, but we do not. I would like to ask here, what are you guys going to do to accommodate our residents neighboring this project? Thank you.
Thanks, Brent. We'll get to that in a minute. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Okay, back to the commission. Dave was, or Mark, I guess it is, was, was there consideration given to the surrounding fraternity and sorority on the east side there of this project?
Yes, I received, I believe we spoke today, was it 2002, 2023? And the question came about parking. That was a topic that I brought up in our meeting this afternoon. And Jeff or Jim could probably address this as well, but you all are familiar with the geography of that site there. They simply don't have access to the, what would be the east side of that apartment complex without utilizing the right-of-way, including the parking for access, just simple access to the site for construction activities, to maintain the fence for safety, as well as any OSHA requirements there are for setbacks. That's my understanding. And so was, we weren't able to pull the fence back in to allow parking on Indiana there. It just simply wouldn't be enough room for them to have access to their project site.
Mark, would they have access to parking passes from the university?
I believe as students, they probably would, yes. I'm not sure though.
I don't know that we can make a parking lot out of thin hair. I wish we could, but that might be a direction we would go that would be reasonable to work something out with the university, that they have access to that at this late, you know, for next year, and the rest of this year.
The parking in Memorial Stadiums?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we find out information on that, see if that is a possibility then?
Yes, the city staff can, in conjunction with the developers, make those contacts, absolutely.
Are you making it a condition that they have access to purchase them? Or are you making it?
I would just recommend that we try to intercede and create a situation where we facilitate the activity rather than mandate it.
Those are approximately 18 spaces on the west side of Indiana that will be basically eliminated for the duration of the project.
And those are public spaces now, from what I'm understanding?
So again, you're not suggesting that be a condition of approval of this plan?
Correct.
Okay.
Mark, nice question. I'm looking at a chart here, let's see, trying to get one of the many, let me go back and see which one it is. Sorry. The demolition exhibit. You can pull that up there somewhere. And Indiana Street's on the bottom of this?
Yes, that's correct.
Can't quite read it, but it seems to me like, understanding the topography of that site, that they're going to have to come in from the north or from the west to demolish that stuff. Because right where Mrs. Bell's house was, it's just almost a cliff straight down.
Yeah, correct.
And so I don't understand, I could see where you need to have a fence there somewhere, but it looks like on this chart, then you brought it out to past where the cars parallel park, is that correct?
Yes.
Is it really necessary, I mean, I'm looking at this, what kind of construction activity would take place there at that, on that west side of Indiana Street? Because it's probably 20 feet, part of that's probably 20 feet down.
That's correct.
I mean, one of the construction people here could answer that.
And we discussed, that was the same similar question to what I had asked about moving it back. This, the fence location is not just for the demolitions, but it's the location for the entire length of the project, even during erection, as they go up out of the ground.
Well, okay.
So I don't know, Jim or Jeff, you want to come up?
Okay, here's the point. I understand in construction, you got to have vehicles there to, cranes and things to lift things. But during the demolition part of it, is it not possible just to eliminate the sidewalk activity and still leave the parking there? When you get into construction, then you can maybe take the whole parking area, too.
Your question is, one of the challenges to the site is there's over 1,200 lineal feet of fence to, you know, replacing the fence, erecting it, making sure it's secure, and then moving it again is not necessarily a very effective or efficient methodology as it relates to the reason why, and I don't know, we need a flat area from which to work from. As you pointed out, there's a tremendous topography hole there. What the sidewalk area and the, that parallel parking row on Indiana Street allows us is a relatively flat area, far less than what's there. So that's the reason we need it.
You're not going to demolish from Indiana Street area. You're going to build, I can understand when you get into building it, you'll build it, you'll, your heights of your building will be up above that.
What is your point?
My point is, do we need to take the parking spaces off during demolition? And maybe we just need to do it during?
Demolition is a matter of days. So we're going to set 1,200 lineal feet of fencing? It's just not a practical solution.
So Bob, what are you saying? Are you saying that we can come and take the sidewalk out, have the fence so that it covers the sidewalk?
I don't think they're going to use that site on that side for demolition. You leave the parking in place for a while, then when you get ready to build, move the fence. And he's, John was saying?
Phase two is six days of demolition.
Okay.
Yep. Thanks. Any other questions of staff? Any other public comment on this item?
If I could just add there quickly to what Jim said, the additional, the reason for the additional space also?
We have your name?
I'm sorry, my name is Jeff Johnson with Stevens Construction. We've got basically virtually zero staging area on the site. The site is, the building is approximately the outline of the dash lines that you're looking at on that screen. So when we start, yes, we won't need it for the day of demolition and through demolition, but shortly, immediately after demolition, before the demolition is even complete, we're going to start constructing the project. We're going to have huge amounts of concrete forming systems that are going to come in. We're going to need to prefab and build those concrete walls. We're going to need lay-down area for that. And a huge amount of material is going to come in to put this thing together. And there's actually virtually- And there's actually virtually zero lay-down area for this project. The entire site will be at, once we start construction, will be either eaten up by demolition procedures or excavation procedures or concrete installation procedures. Zero lay-down area. The Mississippi Street area is going to be for materials bringing in, concrete trucks primarily. A delivery of concrete is going to be facilitated down, down there. There's nothing on the, along 11th that we can use and nothing along Indiana Street. So, we need some lay-down area for all the construction and concrete forming materials that are coming in, huge amount of, huge amount of materials that are coming in. So, we're going to be working across the entire site. There's, there's soil improvement and, and piers that are going to be going on across the site. So, the site's going to be eaten up by demolition, grading, soils improvements, all kinds of heavy equipment that are going to be on the site, nowhere to, to put together the concrete form. So, it, it seems egregious and yeah, we wouldn't need it immediately from day one, but we'll need it very, very shortly and, and just the relocation of it in a short period of time doesn't make sense. And then we'll need it, as you already, I can see, understand, you know, safety-wise, as we start taking the building up in elevation for overhead protections and stuff. But I'm, I'm coming off of a project, almost the exact same size, and we actually had more room than what we were allotted here and we had, you know, difficulties with that situation. So, we've got some extreme concerns about our work area on the site.
Thank you for the explanation.
Mark, I do have a question. Did we remove parking when the project to the north of this was built, at Varsity House, do you remember?
I'm, I'm sorry, could you just?
Did we remove parking when the Varsity House complex was built?
I believe we did, yes, on Indiana and 11th Street both, and Indiana Alley as well.
Yeah, we did.
What was the accommodation for the adjoining figures?
I don't recall that there was an accommodation.
What's that?
A hunting license.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, any other comment? Back to the commission.
Let's do it.
The parking, again, Terry, you want to bring up exactly what you're asking?
I, I would like us as a city to facilitate the use of KU parking at Memorial Stadium to mitigate the parking problems that this structure occurs.
18 spaces?
Yes.
But here again, not as a condition, so. Anything else that we want to add? Okay, the item before us then is to authorize the right-of-way permit for Public Works Project 1417. And the contingencies, are they still there, Mark? Contingencies have been met?
All except for the haul route has not been finalized yet.
Okay, with the addition of us assisting in trying to take care of some parking assistance, Mark, Dave, with KU, Dale, with members of fraternity and sorority, then I would entertain a motion then to authorize the right-of, right-of-way permit for Public Works 1417 contingent upon the haul route being approved.
Still moved?
Second. Motion made in second for approval made by Commissioner Reardon, second by Commissioner Shum. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Mark, thank you. Next item is to receive staff briefing on status of Utilities Department capital projects and receive briefing on the planned Wacarosa wastewater treatment plant project and related pump station and transmission corridor improvements. And the commission expected to set the bid date on the project on January 13th of 2015. That will not be this evening.
Mayor and commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to start out the new year with a briefing on the progress we've made on the capital improvement plans in the Utilities Department for Water and Wastewater Services. Just a little bit of background and, and taking the way back. In late 2012, we completed a master plan at, at your direction. In March of 2013, the commission adopted that plan and the corresponding CIP that went along with that. In September of 2013, you also adopted a memorandum of understanding with Kansas Department of Health and Environment. It had a somewhat of an agreement with the state that we proceed with that plan as well as modifications. And later on, in actual 2014, that memorandum of understanding and the integrated plan was incorporated into our NPDS permits. That happens to be the first instance of an integrated plan being integrated or being put into a discharge permit in the United States without a formal enforcement action. So, we believe that's given us the opportunity when we, when we develop the plan and make modifications to it to be the, I think we've talked about being the drivers of the bus and we think we'll do a better job than the regulators. So, I want to remind you of some of the reasons we've continually mentioned that drive our plans. One is reliability and maintaining what we have. We also, as, as the community continues to grow, we need to expand capacity to support growth and development as well as meet the primary functions of what the department's doing with protecting human health and the environment, both from a regulatory perspective but as service perspective as well. Today, out of that plan, gives you some, some basic numbers. We've completed about $10 million worth of projects to date. We currently have 23 projects underway, either in design and construction. The value of those projects reaches about $111 million. And we currently have issued $41 million in contracts and, in work, both in design and construction. I'll give you a brief slideshow and pictorial of where we're at with some of the new, some of the projects. The major one from a reliability and capacity point of view that provides us both expansion opportunities is the water intake at the Call Water Plant. That is in operation. We still have some details to complete in that work, but it went into operation late last year. And it is the first time that, at least in my memory and a lot of the people that I know in the utility departments that we've had, redundant abilities and ways to get water into the Call Water Plant for service. The North Lawrence Transmission Gate, again, a reliability and capacity project that provides, again, for the first time, redundant supply to North Lawrence. Previous to this, we've had one pipe that goes across the Kansas River Bridge. And this will provide two. It is very close to being in operation. It's undergoing disinfection as we speak and we hope later on, in the next week or two, that it'll be actually in service. It's a very large line, 30-inch in diameter and very long. Eventually, future phases, we expect to extend to the east and then back to the south. It'll serve the southeast areas as well. The Oriad Water Tanks, we've talked a fair amount about those in the past and the picture's there. The little white spots are actual holes in those tanks. So, Dave often refers to them of Hoover and Ike, based on the presidencies when they were installed. We're continuing to, to look at, at detailed design options and considerations on constructability with that project. We expect that project to move forward and, and undergo detailed design probably in the next quarter, we hope. The EcoFlow Program, which is trying to keep rainwater out by mitigating sources in private structures throughout the community, mostly to the east of Iowa Street, has been so far a really a great project for us. We've been in so far about 1,450 dwellings and inspected those. We've identified somewhere in the neighborhood of 435 problems and 341 properties. And we've completed 258 of those repairs to date. Plumbers, we've paid plumbers approximately $373,000 and we've got work orders out right now to do an additional $72,000 worth of work in the first phase of that project. So, overall, the project's identified to go into 8,800 properties, which is a significant part of Lawrence, and try to keep that rainwater out, which is a benefit to all of us. So it's been a win-win project, I think, for the, both the homeowners that are involved in that as well as the rate payers and the customers because we're, we believe at the end of this year when, or at the end of the spring, when we monitor that, we anticipate that we'll show some significant success in getting rid of some of that rainwater that costs us all money in order to treat later on. I think it's been real, real well-received. Charlie Garzillo, who's the face of the city with the residents out there, I talked to him today. And he said as he's going around the neighborhoods that, that we're engaged in is, it's like driving an ice cream truck. So people are coming out of their houses and asking him about how to get involved in the program. And through the course of his work so far to date, he's gotten three hugs. So anytime a city worker that's going in working on sewer gets a hug, we think it's a, a pretty good success. So congratulations to Charlie on that. Water main replacement. The master plan identifies 85 miles of line out of our 500 or so lines that need replacement between now and 2030. We've gotten a little over seven miles of that line replaced today. The next phases of those projects will have approximately four to four and a half miles of line in the next coming year or two that we'll get after. So it's a long-term program. Previous capital plans had about $1 million of expenditures for water line replacements. We've increased that by threefold to $3 million a year. So there's a lot of linear work going on on North Iowa Street as well as other areas. Some of that work's also being done in-house as well.
Slide, the picture in the center there, I saw that on the computer.
Yes.
Is that an existing water line that's being replaced? Is that what that is?
That, I believe that was the Kentucky Water Line that has been replaced.
How, how big is that?
18-inch or?
16-inch?
This one?
Yeah.
Oops, sorry.
I think that came out of Mississippi, which was an existing eight.
Okay.
So that, that came out of a section on Mississippi Street between Third and Ninth. Going back to 1922, if I recall.
Yeah, I think previously we've brought a few of those lines in here. We didn't do that today to show you what they really look like when we take them out.
Is that where you get the red water from too, from the rust on the inside of the?
It, it would, it would present itself that way if there was a disturbance in the line. A lot of times it'll stick pretty tight, but it can come loose if we move water around suddenly.
Once more, I get a chunk of it.
It could get, yes. It's pretty barnacled. So, I think the other thing, from, from a reliability perspective that we've done, we replaced some forced mains. Since we're putting water to North Lawrence, some of that water needs to come back to the wastewater plant. And so, the new forced mains is another reliability project, making sure we can transport the wastewater to that facility, or back to the wastewater plant as well from North Lawrence. There's obviously a lot of other projects we have either underway or on the books with that capital plan and a few of those that we've talked about with you before, the Taste and Odor process improvements, that design's underway. Stratford Water Tank Evaluation is complete and we'll be looking at Engineering Services and giving you some recommendations probably later on this year in that area. A lot of the South Lawrence Traffic Way and take K-10 relocations are either underway or complete. And the host of the other projects there, none that are necessarily small but important for both reliability and capacity improvements. The last one on the list, which I think we plan to present to you in some detail tonight, the Wacarosa Wastewater Treatment Plant. We'll get into that and, you know, again, in a fair amount of detail. With that, I'd kind of pause and see if you have any questions about the CIP or, or things we can clarify or answer.
Questions of staff?
It's awesome.
Yeah, it is, Dave.
Thank you.
It's amazing is, is to see that pipe that Commissioner Shum pointed out and realized our water's coming through that.
Yes, yes, definitely.
Not anymore.
Not anymore. That one's, and we still have a lot of those to do, but we're picking the, we're picking the most critical ones first.
Ted Boyle will notice increased pressure with his toilet water in how many weeks?
I don't know that I'm going to commit to that, but I'll tell you what, it'll be, it'll be more reliable that he'll have it there when he needs it. Any other question?
Anyone else? Okay.
Okay. I think we'll move on if I can. We have a lot of the design team members here for the Wacarosa facility and, and we'll try to go over that and give you a status report on what that's like as, as well as the progress that's been made. So, members of Black and Veatch and Trainer and Bartlett West staff are here, as well as city staff that have expended a lot of effort on the project over the course of the design phase of this project. We do, we are complete with the design of the facility and we'll be approaching you next week to set a bid date for the next construction phase project of this, for the next construction of this. I, I wanted to give you a little bit of what the drivers are for the, for the wastewater treatment plant as well as what is it going to do for us, to make sure we know what we're getting when we ask you to spend that amount of money. We presented before in the master plan, we determined that in the area of the 31st Street Corridor, that we have a surcharge condition that is modeled right now. We've been able to manage that currently. But the wastewater treatment plant, by diverting flows at that Pump Station 10 site, it's very small and you're on the screen, but it's approximately in that area where I'm mousing. It'll relieve that wet weather condition and be able to transport that to the new wastewater treatment plant. The area in the shadow is the areas that'll be served by the new wastewater treatment plant, which obviously is, is a significant amount of the flow that's actually already there. So it'll divert it off and, and treat it at the new plant. It'll also help us reduce wet weather loading at the existing plant. The private I and I program is just one-pronged approach about doing that. Currently, we see flows in excess of 80 million gallons a day. The plant can actually manage wet weather flows of 65 million gallons a day. So we need to, to trim that number off and this facility will help do that. It obviously also provides about 20 percent of additional treatment capacity for the citizens of Lawrence. We anticipate at current growth rates, that'll probably last to the year 2030. But as those, as we know, those vary from time to time. There's some options there for expansion as well. And I think the other, the other significant thing there is, is to take a first step in the integrated plan to meet new regulatory requirements to remove nutrients. It's a, it's a major national issue. You noticed on the, on the Taste and Odor thing, there's some loop in that or impact to that if you want to consider that and that Taste and Odor issues are often due to excess nutrients in the environment. So, the wastewater plant will help with that effort on a national level as well. So, those are the things that I think were deliverables we expect with the project. Some of the, I wanted to review briefly the consequences, what happens if we don't do this? And I think it's important to understand that. It, it really would limit our ability to serve any additional growth in the areas, in, in the pink areas that are served by that 31st Street Corridor condition, system, collection system. The wet weather overloading at the existing wastewater plant would continue and probably increase to some degree if we don't, don't take action to relieve that. And I think there's probably a chance that you'd see us not making recommendations for approvals because of limited capacity, both organic treatment capacity but as well as wet weather capacity in the future. And we also believe that that would probably garner the attention of the regulators and, and probably increase the potential anyway that they would take more formal aggressive actions to, to require us to do it. So, a lot of the other communities have already gone down that boat in, in their planning processes where they haven't been able to keep up and the regulator steps in and mandates it. So, I think that's somewhat of the consequences. Just a, a real quick overview, we've talked about it before, what's actually incorporated in, into the project? A new wastewater treatment plant at the Wacarosa site, it's green on the lower right-hand corner. Pump Station 10 is the very small red mark up there. That's at the corner of 31st and Louisiana. And then forced mains that would transmit the sewage from that Pump Station 10 site to the Wacarosa facility, as well as some work at the Kansas River Wastewater Treatment Plant. One is to do a centralized lab expansion to support the additional analytical work that we need to do for compliance. We think it's better to do that at a central lab and create one central lab rather than multiple remote labs. And then also, we've had some equipment requirements that- And then also we've had some equipment requirements that, that makes sense to do along with this project and the final clarifiers at the existing wastewater plant. Those have actually been in service for almost 40 years, so they're in need of replacement as well, so that somewhat makes sense. I, I think with that, I wanted to also let you know what we've done differently over what was conceived in the master plan concept with the design, as we've gone through the design phases, we've looked at opportunities as well as more detailed information about what our needs are. The design is for a one, 2.5 million gallon process train versus two 1 million gallon a day trains. So 20% increase in, in the concept plan on, on the sizing. That presented some opportunities to make the facility more capable of expansion in the future and presently if needed, if, if there was a sudden need to do so, without having to throw away the, the work that was done. So we found that was a, a good option to pursue. We also have, while we're here, going to present an option to add an additional two and a half million gallon trains, so a five million gallon facility, if indeed there are drivers to do that. So we'll be able to present you with a price for that. There's a flexibility to manage the flows at that 31st and Louisiana site to either deliver them to the existing wastewater plant or take them to the new plant. That gives us some reliance and redundant services there as well and some flexibility for process considerations. We selected an alternative force main route that is flatter and shorter. Some of the constructability of that required additional capital requirements to build that, which is currently under construction, but the payback is, is it significantly more energy effi- efficient in the long run because we have to pump the water to a less, to a lower level. It's a lot, being a lot flatter. So that's a trade-off to some degree, but we think it's a significant improvement. We upsized the force mains to accommodate future growth since it is through a sensitive area, as well as provide space for a third line eventual, eventually if we need that to service in the future. As I mentioned, we're replacing clarifier equipment at the Kansas River Plant as well. And also adding lab functions to the Kansas River Plant instead of building a larger lab at the Waukerusa Facility to centralize those things. As part of the easement agreement with the Baker Wetlands and Baker University, we've also agreed to do some public enhancements there that we think will benefit the community as well and in trails and access to, to that new amenity that's, that's currently in, in construction out there as well. So that's kind of what's changed. I want to turn it over to Melinda Harder, who's our project manager for the project. She'll go over the history a little bit because I think as you, many of you recall, we've probably been at this for over 10 years now, in one fashion or another, and some of you have been involved in that. But I think I'll turn it over to Melinda and let her go over where we're at and then we'll get into some details.
So as you know, we began this project over 10 years ago. 2003, 2003 wastewater master plan recommended a new seven MGD wastewater treatment plant for a projected 2025 population of 150,000. We began the site selection process in 2005 and that process included evaluating seven potential sites. The site investigation report that came out in 2006 recommended a site at 41st and O'Connell, which at the time was just north 1175 and East 1600 Road. So in 2007, the city purchased 538 acres, which would become the new Waukerusa plant. In 2007, the basis of design report was completed. The city also applied for and received the KDHE discharge permit, allowing seven MGD discharge. And 2007, the city commission adopted the Resolution 6717, which was for construction of the new wastewater treatment plant, pump stations and other improvements at an estimated cost of 88 million. And however, in November of 2007, the project was placed on hold due to growth that was slower than what was projected. That did allow us though to reassess all of the aspects of the proposed system. So in 2012, the wastewater utilities master plan found that the initial size of the wastewater facility could be reduced to two MGD based on a new projected 2030 population of 120,000. The master plan recommended a new location for pump station 10 at 31st and Louisiana. And it also recommended that the wastewater treatment plant and command facilities be online by 2018. The estimate of expenditures was 64 million over a five-year CIP. 2013, we issued an RFP for Engineering Services to get started on the design of the Waukerusa wastewater treatment plant and command's corridor facilities. The selected team was Black and Beach. Also on the team, PEC, Bartlett West and Trainer, local firms. The city also in 2013 purchased the site for pump station 10 there at 31st and Louisiana on the northwest corner. And just last year, 2014, we continued through designs. There were some additional supplemental engineering surface agreements as we went through more phases of the design. We did those little by little and then we awarded the first few construction contracts. Two of the contracts were related to the force mains and then there was a construction contract to start the site fill and the access roads at the Waukerusa plant. Going into a little bit more detail on those contracts, we had the casing pipe installation across what's going to be a new Haskell and then the force mains. That project was awarded in August and is underway now. We have some images of that. This is the force main that's strung out along 34th, 35th Street west of Louisiana. And this is showing the, the fusing process. So they fused out the, the pipe and laid that out. The 16-inch force main has already been installed by HDD. Site fill began, the project was awarded in July, work began in August. The site fill and road improvements project, as you can see in these images, site fill, we had over 400,000 cubic yards added to the site. It's a, the footprint of the facility is about 25 acres of the 538 acres. So it's a tremendous amount of fill. We have a webcam available to see the process. You can go back and see a time lapse of how that was placed. Placement of it now allows for consolidation over a period of six to 10 months, depending on where you're at across the site. And so that will allow construction to begin late spring, early summer on the plant itself, allow all the consolidation to take place. The picture on the right shows the flood mitigation channel associated with when you add fill in one area and you're in the flood plain, you have to mitigate any flood potential also on the site. So there's now a flood mitigation channel. And it actually was already working, you can see there was filled with water. The cost of these construction contracts to date, as well as design, engineering, engineering design fees, property acquisitions such as pump station 10 and, and other related costs for the project right now are just over $20 million. In 2015, of course, construction's planned to begin on the Waukerusa plant, the Influent Pump Station 10 and the Kansas River wastewater treatment plant improvements, which include the lab expansion and the clarifier equipment replacement. It's just a preview of a couple of things you'll see in more detail here shortly in the presentation. On January 13th, next Tuesday, we would like to request a bid date for Contract 4, which includes the plant and the, and the Influent Pump Station. Then advertise the project, have a pre-bid late in January and receive bids February 17, so it's a five-week advertising period. Schedule right now to award the project, come to you with recommendations March 10th. Hopefully issue a notice to proceed by the end of March with construction starting beginning of May. I'll turn it over to Mike Wallace to discuss some of the project funding.
Thanks. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I get to talk to you a little bit about how, you've, you've heard about the projects and how are we going to fund that? So I guess I'll start with, if we go back about two years ago, Dave mentioned that we brought the integrated plans forward and that was adopted by the commission and at that same time, the commission adopted the 2013 to 2017 CIP in the tune of $161 million. And so Dave kind of went over those highlights of some of those projects in his earlier presentation. So that's some of the 161 million. Obviously, the Waukerusa project is a, is a large portion of that 161 million. And then in the CIP report that, that was also included in the, in the agenda, there's, there's more on those projects that Dave alluded to. So the next thing is we have a, a plan, a CIP plan, but there's got to be a way to fund that. And you might remember this, it should look familiar to you, this was what we presented in May of 2014 for the 2015 rate scenario. And that's the one highlighted in yellow there. The one just above that is kind of the comparison back to what we originally presented to you two years ago in 2013, which is the Scenario 5, 2013 to 2017 CIP. And I guess I just wanted to point out to you that we're in year three of that five-year funding window. And we shouldn't forget that we have, there's two more years there, plus the rates that we look to beyond that as we, as we continue the CIP programs, as well as the operation and maintenance of not only the three facilities that we have, but the new facility that we're building and some of the other CIP improvements such as taste and odor and some of the pump stations that go along with the, the water side of the CIP. So the, the question is where are we at on the Waukerusa project? Melinda mentioned that the 2013 to 2017 CIP had $64 million for that project and right now we're estimating that the total wastewater treatment plant project for Waukerusa is in the 65 to 70 million dollar range, which includes contingencies. And the good thing about that is that the 2013 to 2017 CIP program and the funding that we've laid out can deliver that project as, as we said. Lastly, the, the thing that I want to mention is that the 65 to 70 million dollar project that we have, we also did some design alternatives that Dave alluded to in terms of the additional train and some other alternatives that we looked at. Those alternatives and total project, total wastewater project are about 72 to 77 million. And those may or may not be funded within the 2013 to 2017 CIP. Some of that's going to really depend on what kind of bids do we get? Do we get good bids? Do we get bids that, you know, that meet the estimated cost? So those will be analyzed and brought forward to you when we, after we have those bids. And I think some of the alternatives will be discussed here in a little more detail. And I think for now, I'll turn it over to John Keller with Black and Beach and he'll take you through a little bit more of the details of the project.
Good evening. Again, my name is John Keller, I work for Black and Beach Engineers in Kansas City, Missouri. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. This project, as I said, is, has been an integrated team. It's been very important that we have had the PEC, Bartlett West and Trainer as part of our team. And you can see what they've worked on, the pump station 10, force mains, the Baker Wetland enhancements for PEC. Bartlett West did a lot of the surveying, plating, permitting, all the site work, all the roads, which will be O'Connell Road and 41st Street and the Peak Flow Storage Basin. Trainer Architects, we use their expertise into the administration building both at the Waukerusa plant, pump station 10, and then the expansion of the existing Kansas River wastewater treatment plant. I also listed the city Lawrence here. They've been a big part of the design effort as well. They've done a lot of the paperwork, the permitting, planning. They've also been the lead administrator for the admin facility at the Waukerusa facility. But they're also going to take a big part in construction as well. They're going to be, be the integrator that INC controls, that will be actually be the brains behind the plant. They're designing the panels, building the panels, buying the equipment. And this will help smooth the startup, but also save you guys money in this effort. Then in Black and Beach is just the overall project coordination. We've worked on the wastewater treatment plant and the Kansas lab. This section over here is the design team, so from Bartlett West and PEC and Trainer. So if you have any questions, they'd be happy to address them. One thing I did want to mention is we've been meeting with the city for about 15 months. First five months, we met about every week and then we kind of backed off every couple times a month, but in the last few months, we went about every three times a month. So we've really been a great, integrated team throughout the whole project. There's really three components to Contract 4. And first is the pump station 10. We have the, the treatment plant and the admin, or the Kansas River plant, and I'm not going to really talk about that tonight. But this is the pump station 10. This is Louisiana up here. And so this is the northwest corner of Louisiana Street and, and 31st Street. This is the actual pump station itself. It's a below-grade pump station, all the guts are below. We have a green roof here. All the flow is going to come into a flow diversion structure right here. So all the flow will come from the Snodgrass property from the, from the west and then come into the plant, we'll process it and then we'll make a decision either to go to the new Waukerusa facility or we can go back to the Kansas River plant. 90% of the flow will always go to the Waukerusa facility. Just north of it is the Bridgepoint Church. This is the actual wastewater treatment plant that we have proposed for the project. You can see the Waukerusa River back here. This would be approximately 41st Street and then you can see right here is O'Connell coming from the north. So we have one entrance into the plant. We have the Headworks complex. This is where all the flow will be coming from pump station 10. We have a chemical storage and feed building. We have ferrochloride on the plant. Our biological nutrient removal basins, and I'll talk about that here in a second. Our final clarifiers, the final slash pump station, a UV disinfection facility, and then the outfall will be actually right approximately in this location on the Waukerusa River. So the flow will come into the plant right here, kind of take this path through the UV and then back out to the Waukerusa River. We also have some additional facilities. This is the administration building. We'll have a large, we're planning for a large conference room that will be a bid alternative, but this will be where the lab is. We have a peak flow storage basin, a vehicle storage maintenance building, waste thickening. This is where we'll take the solids out, thicken them up so we can land apply them. And then we have a solar PV that we're planning to provide for this project. Now I'm going to quickly kind of change paths here. And we put a video together of what we believe the site will look like, or give you a relationship of how everything is. Okay. This is a, I'm going to start it over again, I apologize. This is pump station 10. And now we're looking east, so to the, to the, this side right here, this is the Bridgepoint Church. The old Snodgrass property is coming this way. This would be Louisiana and this would be 31st Street. This is a below-grade pump station. Everything's internal. What you're seeing right here is where we get the pumps out. We will have a green roof. It's one of the green parts of the project. This is the flow diversion structure right here. Any of the storm water flow that we have will be collected in this retained basin right here and then drained off appropriately. Swing around, now we're on the north side of it. And now we're going to go back to the south side and we're going to kind of show you the force main path. So this is the 31st Street right here. This is Louisiana, I believe this is Haskell and this is 35th Street. So the force main will discharge from the pump station, go through Broken Arrow Park and then we'll go south down to 35th Street. A lot of this is being horizontally, directionally drilled. From there, we'll have another run to this location and then this will be open trench along 35th Street. So we will So, we will come across here. We'll tunnel underneath the Waukesha River, and then we'll open excavation into the plant. So, this is the piece of property that you currently own for the property, for the Waukesha Facility. This would be 11, north 1175, and this is E1600. So, this will be 41st Street, and this will be O'Connell Road right here. You can see what we envisioned for the wastewater treatment plant itself. As we come into the treatment plant, the first facility you're going to see is the Headworks Facility. And really, this is the highest part of the project. Most of the sites, about 1020, or excuse me, 823. This is about 40 feet from this location. So, this will be the highest point of the site. All the wastewater from pump station 10 will come into this facility. And then, from there, we'll go through the treatment process. One of the things that we utilize on this project was a technology called BIM. And that's Business Information Modeling. And what we did is, we actually built our drawings, our model, with all the concrete, all the architectural, all the mechanical, electrical, as what you're seeing right here. This is the actual drawings that we built for this project. And this is how we presented the project to the city. And then, we render it. We called out the pieces and parts to make it look lifelike. But this is what we're envisioning when we start the plant up late 2017. You know, we can, you can see the wall, the wall hydrants, lighting, the ducts, the lights. Again, this is strictly the model that we print out into our drawings. And the beauty of this allowed us to design the project in about seven months, which is about five months than a traditional project. So, it was better for everybody. Another benefit of this BIM modeling is clash detection. We can literally let the city see how they can get around the facilities. Do we have enough clearances? Do we have anything running into each other? You can see we have a little conflict right there. We don't have any guardrails. So, those are the things that we can pick up. We also were able to share this with the fire marshal, Captain King. Again, this is the highest point in the process. He wanted, he saw this road in here. He wanted this to be 49 feet, or so he'd get his trucks in here for fire protection. So, we were able to use that in our code review as well. We do have a 5 million gallon storage basin on site. Currently, the city has about 11 million gallons. So, we're going to add another 5 million gallons to the cities. This is the administration building right here. And what this is going to house is the control room and a small little analytical lab, locker facilities for the workers. But this area right here, we're going to harden the structure, not to FEMA, but we're going to harden it just for protection because we're out in the middle of nowhere. Right here is, is the large meeting room. This is a bid alternative. It's 120-person capacity that will let the contractor give us a price for it. And if the prices are good, then we will accept it. As we continue through the process, these are our switch gears. We are providing redundant power to the plant. We have two lines coming in, one from the north from O'Connell and one down 1100. You can see the two treatment trains right here. So, the bid alternative, the main project, this is the two-and-a-half MGD train right here. This is their biological nutrient removal basins. And the goal of this is to remove nutrients, both nitrogen and phosphorus. We have our final clarifiers. This portion right here will be a bid alternative. We've designed it. We don't accept it. We can always build that in the future. Again, the final clarifiers, the final sludge pump station. And then, this is the UV building that we have provided. This is the last treatment process for the project. So, we have UV bulbs in the, that will eradicate the wastewater. And then, from here, this goes to the Waukesha River. This is a non-pubal water pumping station. So, any treated water, we can, we're going to pump around the site to use for irrigation, wash down of equipment, anything associated with sealed water for our pumps. So, now, we're looking back to the west. This building right here is the solids thickening building. We plan to take the solids and thicken them up. And then, we're going to storm in these areas right here. And then, this will be land applied. As Melinda said, there's 538 acres there. We're going to have a good land application program at this site. And then, this is the vehicle equipment storage building. And just concluding with the site. So, this is a 5 MGD of treatment. If we wanted to add primary clarifiers, which they would go like right here and right here, and then we could add a secondary final clarifiers, we can easily expand this to 10 MGD. We can also have it set up that we could duplicate this to this right here as well. So, we have many options for your future growth. This will take you almost 40 years of growth. If we add the clarifiers, we're taking off to 50 years of growth. So, we have this spot for forever. Let me exit this. A couple of things I just wanted to touch base on is, we are, have some good nice design features. We talked about the green roof at pump station 10. We've talked about this before. You know, it's saving energy. It's a good facility for all. We have LED lighting. We're providing it at all facilities. Reduction electricity. Also, you won't have to replace LED lights. Flood mitigation has definitely been accounted for, both at the pump station and the treatment plant. We have a bid option for a solar PV system to provide about 20% of the connected load. We are providing the BNR basins, which is advanced treatment. And really, what we're trying to go for is phosphorus. And we're trying to get the limits down to 1, 1.5 milligrams per liter. UV disinfection light. I talked about the treated F1. And the administration building will be LEED certified. We heard about the costs. We see contract for around $40 to $45 million as a bid day price. And we see, coming in March, that we'll be recommending a award of about that ballpark price. Our construction phase engineering services is somewhere between $5 to $6 million. And then, the total project estimate is $65 to $70. And I just want to remind everybody that of that $70 million, about 28, 30% of that cost has already been expended on the force mains, the site fill, the roads, and the previous engineering work. We do have the added alternatives, the two-and-a-half MGD basin, the solar panels and the meeting space. If you add that in, we're at $77 million. If we get good estimates, good bids, we can maybe pick and choose and provide what's the best alternative. All of our costs have appropriate contingencies for where we're at in the project. And we're going to let the contractors dictate where we end up on. But our bid form is written up that you can pick this or that, and there's no clear path. We're just trying to provide the best for the city. To close my part of the presentation is, is you've heard this before, but we plan to come back. We want to give you a heads up of our plant, give you a week to think about it. But we plan to come back on January 13th to request permission to set a bid date. And with that, that concludes my part. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to address them.
John, the five-week bid process, I got to assume is detailed as all of the show was, is that it's going to be a pretty busy, easy bid process, correct? You probably have it down to every fitting and everything?
Well, that's one nice thing about using the BIM model is, we've been able to eliminate a lot of the clashes and all, and we have a pretty good set of plans. These guys have been coordinating really well. So, five weeks will be busy, but we believe that's appropriate time for this project.
Questions? Dave, you have anything else?
Yeah, I don't think so. I think if, again, if there's any questions we can answer, we'll be, if not, we'll be back next week and ask you to set a bid date and get to work on the major parts of the work. So, give you a week to think about it, too. If you have questions next week, we can answer those things as well.
Okay. Thank you. Don't go away.
Okay.
Is there any public comment on this item?
My name's Katie Walsh. I just have two quick questions. It sounds fantastic. I'm not an engineer. Did I hear you say that there will be a gray water system within the plant? My other question is, I'm a person who canoes a lot, and I like to canoe the Waukesha. And it sounded like pure water would be released into the Waukesha. But then, you said they were going to tunnel under, so I didn't know. They do release pure water into the canal. My question is, you can't canoe the Waukesha all the time because you have to rely on the Corps of Engineers and what they release. And so, I wondered if this would be happy news for canoeers. Thank you.
Commissioners, there is, in the existing wastewater treatment plant on A Street, we do reutilize treated wastewater as a gray water system within the plant for wash down and other uses. And this facility will do the same. It's a good practice and not uncommon in wastewater facilities to get some reuse out of that. So, the answer to that is yes, there will be some reuse. The other, as far as navigability with a canoe down the Waukesha, there will be increased flow below the discharge point at this location. It still isn't a significant amount of water relative to what could be discharged from the Clinton Dam. But it is some additional flow anyway. We don't anticipate any degradation related to that discharge.
Thanks, Dave. Okay, thank you. Other comment? Any other comment on this item? Big projects. Okay. Dave, do you have anything?
No. Mayor Commissioners, we knew that this was a very important project for you all to consider. We want you to have the opportunity to spend some more time with these documents. You've had them for a little bit of time. But unless you have any specific reservations, we'll just have on your regular agenda next week to set the bid date.
Well, as I made mention to Commissioner Dever during the presentation, as we talked about the project history, it seems like it's been a majority of our public life to be able to talk about the development of the wastewater treatment plant and also all the improvements, you know, to our water and wastewater lines throughout town. We've all been involved with those improvements. It's great to be able to see these projects as part of this capital improvement plan. We're already, we're already into the projects. You know, payments are being made, and there's adequate funds to be able to take care of these projects. This is, these are things that need to be happening, you know, today for, you know, the clear and clean delivery of, you know, probably one of our most precious things, and that's the water that we drink. And I think staff has done a tremendous job of being able to provide that and make recommendations on way to take care of problems that exist. I know back during the time, in about 2006, when we were five, when we were going through the process, yeah, you first get elected, and the first thing that happens is, guess what? You get appointed to the site selection of the new wastewater treatment plant. I'm telling you, you're blessed to have that job. And so, I'm thinking, well, how hard can this be? Well, I tell you what. I considered everything from wastewater treatment and the typical fashion that's been presented tonight to the good old days of, I think it was an ECO machine, and the evaluation there, and just, and any number of things that we looked at. The, what, six or seven sites that we looked at throughout, you know, the community and the county. And it was, it was quite a process, a very, very good learning experience and one that I think, we had a number of people that volunteered to serve on committee and help with finding, finding the location that was going to be best for everyone, for everyone, and especially our new wastewater treatment plant. So, as we look at the number of projects that are basic health and safety kind of things for our community, and now with the new wastewater plant, I think it's, staff is to be committed for a great amount of work that's been done and recommended. Very fortunate to live in a very good community and wants to stay on top of these things. Anyone else?
I, I would be remiss if I didn't say that it's kind of shocking that nobody's here to say anything about us about ready to spend $70 million. And nobody is saying that the city got their priorities wrong with building a rec center before a wastewater treatment plant. And it just, it causes me to look forward to the listening sessions even more on why folks voted against the police facility. Because clearly, you know, no pun intended, most of the arguments that we heard don't hold any water with the lack of crowd that's here tonight. So, I'm certainly looking forward to those. But not to take anything away from this. I mean, y'all, this is exciting stuff. I didn't think I'd be so excited to hear about poo, but this is great. I almost wish that you'd rather call it project number two instead of 1304. But, you know, I certainly understand. But Dave, congratulations, and this is fascinating stuff. And really looking forward to seeing all the great things that this is going to do for the community and really, really exciting. So, congrats, guys.
Anyone else?
I can remember sitting on that same committee for the site selection and realizing what an important decision that was and how much more difficult than I ever thought it would be. And to see this today is just a great thing, to see the fact that the city does plan ahead. The city does have the ability to have redundancy. And it's almost breathtaking when you look at the amount of land that this is going to drain. You know, everything west of Iowa and everything south of Sixth Street. It's just an amazing amount of ability that we have here. So, I do congratulate Dave and all the city people that have worked on this.
Anyone else? Okay, so Dave, this will be an item on next week's agenda to set the bid date.
That would be the direction we'd ask you to give us this evening.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I would entertain a motion to direct staff to place this item on the agenda to set a bid date of, what was it, on next week's agenda, set the bid date. I don't have the date in front of me. I'm sorry.
Move.
Second.
Establish the bid date.
Establish the bid date.
That's it.
Hey, that's progress for this commission, right?
What is the bid date, Dave?
Well, we'll just, just put, we'll just direct this to put on the agenda for next week.
Okay, that's it.
Set the bid date on January 13th.
That's it. I couldn't think of the date. Thank you. Okay, so the motion is to establish the bid date of January 13th. Made by Commissioner Shum, taken by Commissioner Reardon. All right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
All right. It's been a long day. All in favor of that motion? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Thank you all very much. Okay, at this time, we're going to take about a five-minute break. Okay, we will go ahead and begin again. The next item on the agenda is to direct staff concerning the 2015 legislative priority statement.
Mayor Commissioners, when we last talked about this, you asked for a number of considerations, and we've tried to respond to them in the statement. Included the support of Medicaid expansion. That needs to be changed, that's what it was. And it's, I appreciate Melinda pointing that out. Then the issue of businesses denying services based upon the sexual orientation or the marital status of patrons. Statements that we've had in previous policy documents were also strengthened in regards to the protection of the city share, of the liquor tax, supporting K-12 schools and higher education. Also, the issue of not balancing the state budget on the back of local government and making sure that they realize that cuts to social service agencies hurt our local agencies as well. We did receive some correspondence from Melinda Henderson, and you see that there. I think she does make the point that the issue of making local elections partisan and moving the dates has seen some legislative interest in the past. We have a general statement against mandates. It may be appropriate to add the suggested language as well. And then also, you have, Mayor, the correspondence that you received from the Brady campaign that we may want to speak to as well this evening. So we'll take your direction on this. We do want to have some statement prepared, some finality this evening, so that we can print something up to pass out Thursday morning for the breakfast. But keep in mind, though, that as we receive legislation or as you hear about legislative issues that you believe the City Commission should take a stance on, we'll be prepared to respond to that as well.
Okay. I do think it would be appropriate to spell out the support of keeping our elections local and nonpartisan. I appreciate Melinda's bringing that to our attention. I mean, sometimes it's easy to overlook the simplest of the things and think, you know, that we may have it covered, but in this particular case, because of there were discussions and that we had heard about last year in the fall, I assume, committee kind of things, that I think it's really appropriate that we can spell that out and that we would like to keep our elections nonpartisan and not part of the general election. I also, and if that's fine, I would suggest that we direct staff to add that particular language. I did receive a correspondence from Warren Stanton. He is with the Brady campaign, his Brady campaign for gun violence. And one of the things that we've been asked to participate in is a survey that would expand the background checks to, oh, gun shows and over the internet. And I said that I had told him that I would bring that to this commission. It may not be something that maybe is part of our legislative program that we spell out this week. This point is, it is a simple item that we have been asked to be a part of the survey. The information that he provided us is that they have received responses from 53 mayors of the 60 of the most populated cities in the state. And I know that in the past, we have talked about our stand on various issues of this that are something that we've been supportive of. So I bring it to us, and if we wish to participate in that survey at this point. I think further request of information would come if a bill was drafted by the legislature to be considered. So at this point, it's a survey. Okay? Sounds good. Okay. Any other items that we want to discuss about our legislative priority statement? Anything that we've forgotten? Anything that we want to expand upon?
I thought I saw, sir.
Okay. Everybody's happy with where it's at with the additions that we've talked about? Is there any public comment on our priority statement, our legislative priority statement, and the additions that we visited about this area that we've talked about this evening? Okay? Then with that, I think that with the changes on the, was it the Medicaid?
Correct. The sentence on the local elections, that basically Wyandotte County has, I think, is a good sentence as well, to make those changes.
Right.
And then you'll, Mayor, you'll respond to the survey, and we're not making any changes to the policy statement.
No. And all I would be asking for is direction from the commission to have me respond to the survey and being on the background checks. Correct? Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, then I would entertain a motion to adopt our 2015 legislative priority statement with the two changes that I brought up a minute ago, and also to direct me to sign a statement supporting the Brady campaign for gun violence survey and the background check.
That's good.
I would entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second for approval, made by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Reardon. Guys, everybody okay? Okay, all in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes 5-0. So we'll get that all printed up for, like, now. Next item on the agenda is the city auditor's update on status of construction audit review of Rockchuck Park infrastructure. Authorize the payment to RCP LLC for loan origination and loan interest costs per Rockchuck Park development. If appropriate, that final check claim would be paid on January 13th, 2015. Michael?
Good evening. Mike Glinsky, the city auditor. Couple of weeks ago, you asked me to come back with identifying a construction audit firm that could take a look at the infrastructure at Rockchuck Park. I identified a number of firms and asked them to submit some proposals. We put the information on the DemandStar to make it more broadly available. Sort of compressed the time that would normally be provided to vendors to respond. We got, we actually got pretty good responds. We had three that submitted information. And I reviewed those. The deadline for submissions was yesterday at 5:00, so came into the office this morning and started reviewing them. Identified one that I thought would be a recommended consultant, and that is McDonald and Associates. They provided information that I think would allow them to complete the work. They're independent, as you guys emphasized. The timeline that we, that you were interested in was pretty aggressive. All of the firms were a little cautious about the ability to meet that time. I think they all believe they can do it, but it's tight. It's something where this time of year, somebody they need to deal with or one of the audit team could come down with the flu, or there could be bad weather or something like that, which would put the timeline off. But I've got a recommendation here for you of a firm. If you choose to go ahead with that, then next thing we would do is, we'd work with Tony Wheeler, and we would work with the vendor to develop a contract that we could bring back with you, I think, next week for approval, and they could get started quite soon. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Michael, I had two people text me, email me today that, and I'm sure the other city commissioners got the same ones. And we want to, we're trying to create an environment, we're trying to create a situation of transparency and trust. And they're saying that if we do this this quickly, to them, it looks like we're just trying to get it done and cover it up and do something real quick and do a poor job and not really get at what we need to do. Are we rushing this? Can we get what we want, which is a real evaluation of this, good or bad, up or down, whatever it is? I think it's going to be up because I think it was well done. But regardless of what I think, are we going to get an accurate and something that the citizens should believe?
I think we can get meaningful information in that time. Whether that would answer every question, I guess, I don't know.
Should we make it a little bit longer? A week or two longer is the, would that be the recommendation of the companies?
I think they would all, would have chosen to have a little bit more time. They all expressed concern about, not that they couldn't do something in that time, but that that was aggressive and that small issues could put that off, so.
The bids you received, or the estimates you received, these are time material estimates. They basically have an hourly rate, they multiply it by the amount of time they think it's going to take, an hourly rate times the number of hours they think. Is that, did they tell you how they came up with their estimate?
Yeah, they're a little bit different, but that's pretty fair, yeah. They'll have an hourly rate, they have a projection.
So by compressing the schedule, there'd be, I mean, there's a fixed amount, or relatively fixed amount of hours, otherwise these people probably would have, I mean, if we make it longer, it might cost more, and that they could spend more time looking at it. If they could do the same job in a short period of time. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, if we extend the period of time, I have no problem, but that's inviting more hours spent on the project, which, if they thought they could do it within this timeframe for this hour, for this rate, I would give them more time to be more thorough, I guess, or to double-check the numbers, but, you know, are we going to get a lump sum price on this? Is that what we're going to estimate? Or is this going to be, if we gave somebody more time to do the job, are they going to charge us more money?
So what we talked about doing was an hourly, they would submit hourly charges plus the sort of out-of-pocket. All of the firms identified, the audit teams were from out of the area, so there would be some travel costs with a not-to-exceed amount. So, I mean, you could establish a not-to-exceed amount of sort of any amount.
Yeah, because typically in my work, when people ask me for a shorter deadline, I charge more because it's harder, it's, you know, overtime, it's extended hours, but if I have more time, I actually charge less because I can fit it into other projects and still do the normal workload I have that comes in while I'm doing this project. So this is basically consulting and estimating that these people do for a living. So, I mean, theoretically, if we extended the time, it might cost less, I don't know. But there's no guarantee of that either. So, I mean, I just want to make sure that we get a good job done in a reasonable period of time for the best possible price.
But here again, if we give the, increase the number of days, is the individual probably going to use all those days?
Well, sure, I would.
Yeah, I know. Me too. Okay. And the bill goes up.
Well, not for you. Not to exceed.
I understand.
But then they could work it into other things, and it would be less of a burden on their staff and on their, on their team as a whole. So, I mean, I want a good product, I don't want them, you know, burning the midnight oil and missing something either. So that's, that's the reason I wouldn't rush it, is because they could make a mistake in calculations or, you know, because they're rushing.
But we could negotiate that deal.
I would think so.
And not to exceed.
I think it would be not any more than what we've already got, and if we gave more time, it might actually be less overtime.
Right, okay. Bob, you have something?
What are the qualifications of this McDonald and Associates? Is this what they do for, is this their expertise, this construction? Auditing and insurance work and types of stuff?
Auditing and insurance work and types of stuff like that?
Construction auditing, yeah. And they're, I mean, they provide, provided resumes, I'm not going to remember them. They have indicated that there is one, one specific individual who would do the majority of the work.
Who, who what? One specific individual?
Yeah.
Who would do all the work?
Who would do the majority of the work. They would be overseen by a supervisor. Their intent is to follow the Institute of Internal Auditors standards to the extent they can. Some of those standards, they would probably be flexible with, to enable them to report more quickly. So they have to have a kind of supervisor.
And what are we going to audit? Are we auditing, are we going to audit the quality of the product, the price of the product relative to what the market says it should be?
Yeah, so...
Are those both areas that we're going to look at?
I would have two comments. One is, based on that meeting a couple of weeks ago, I looked at the kind of main questions that I saw you guys bringing up, and that's part of what I asked them to consider, and those were really, was the work delivered according to the requirements, and were the expenditures appropriate based on the development agreement? So those are kind of fairly broad and high level. One of the first things that they would be doing is coming in and reviewing in detail things like the development agreement, talking with probably a couple of city staff, probably one or two of you, and trying to narrow that a little so that they can have more focused objectives, so.
Okay, and they audit then specifically on the infrastructure improvements?
Yes, the infrastructure.
Which is really more than what we think of, because there's tennis courts in there, there's the running trails in back, and the, and what else do we throw? There's a fire ring that's involved in it, and we just have to have more stuff under the label of infrastructure than we normally think of infrastructure.
And I can't really speak for them, but typically what auditors do is look a little bit at sort of the more material or higher-risk areas, so, you know, they wouldn't, an auditor normally wouldn't chase down a lot of effort trying to verify a very small, small amount. They would focus on areas where there's always, they'd do a little bit more work there, be able to come back with some conclusions.
Okay, now, one last question. In the, in the end, would they look at this project, is there a way they can compare it to other projects built in the region and say, this, here you have this project that came in at this price, and it's very, very good or very bad, whatever it is, because these other projects, like projects or similar projects, cost this, this, and that? Is that part of their overview also?
Yeah, so I think there are a couple of things that they would be likely to look at. One is, Public Works did some comparison, and they could review that and sort of get a feel for that. The other is that they would use, there are some of these kind of construction costs survey materials out there, where they can get, again, it's not going to tell you, you know, a foot of curve should cost exactly this much, but it will put things in the range and give you a level of comfort of, yeah, we're in the ballpark, or we got an amazing deal, or we didn't get an amazing deal. So I think that's their, that would be something they would follow.
Let me ask this question, because I'm very, very concerned about this, based on our earlier conversation with time. Would it be your opinion that we should grant a longer period of time for this audit so that we get the in-depth answer that we're looking for? Or do you think that we can get that in-depth, all-inclusive answer with the shorter timeframe? You're the auditor.
So I think, I think it may be reasonable to grant them a little bit of flexibility in the final reporting, so that an auditor can come in, can do some of the initial planning, and can get a feel for where they are, and could, could do, as Commissioner Dever said, could make some decisions about how to spread out the work, not necessarily add hours, but have a little bit more flexibility, so that, for example, you know, like you say, you know, if somebody they want to talk to has the flu, they can wait a little while.
Well, I think, I think that's, I mean, I want a, I want an honest answer, is what I want. I want, I want to see an in-depth report that has an honest answer and lay it on the table and let people look at it. And I don't want anybody coming in here and saying, well, you rushed it because you covered it up. That's, that's not what the exercise is about. So if it takes a little longer, then I'd say spend the time.
Michael, go back. You say that the first part of the review is going to be for the development agreement itself, the one between RCP, City of Lawrence, Bliss Sports, and Bliss Sports Two, that that development agreement is what the infrastructure is about, correct?
Yes.
And it's going to follow that to make sure that, you know, everything fell into line, correct? Everybody's going to be able to point to this audit when it's said and done, and shows that we did this according to the agreement, correct?
Yeah, that's my understanding of what you guys want, and my understanding is that's what they will provide. They would, again, do some sort of risk assessment where, where, you know, I don't remember how many pages the document is, but they're not going to check every word on every page. They're going to check the sort of higher-level principles and areas that are the higher risk or most important.
And the what?
That are the more important.
Okay.
Focus on those areas.
Well, as the, as other commissioners have said, you know, I don't mind going a little bit extra time, as long as it is complete, you know, there should not be any question when this is done. Correct? Yes?
Yeah, I mean, they may come back to you and say, we need a little more time, or we can't answer every question in the, in the amount that you've given us. But I think they could probably do that, work that would add value certainly. And I think that when they've come in and sat down, you know, they need to look at the documents that Chuck has collected and start digging into those, and that'll be a few hours of work for them. They will be in a better position to say, you know, here's what we're going to need to do.
Mike?
You sent us a scope, proposed scope of work. Is that on the website anywhere?
Yes, it's on the DemandStar.
Oh, DemandStar?
Yeah.
It's not on the, on any of Rock Chalk Park's stuff on the city's website?
I don't think so.
I would suggest maybe posting it up there, once we agree on whether or not that scope of work is adequate. I think I responded to you, I thought it seemed reasonable, but it didn't have it at my fingertips to reconfirm that, but if you could get that just in the same place as all these other documents, it might be helpful for people so they knew where to go for that proposed scope of work.
And, and as soon as we, Tony and I would work to get a contract, and that would, we'd make that, too, that would probably be a little more precise scope as well.
I'm just, I'm thinking we should request information from them by the 17th of February. Yeah, add two weeks to it. And also make recommendations that we set a maximum of 20,000 not to exceed, and, plus travel expenses, additional expenses.
We have the flexibility to negotiate the extra two rates, right?
Okay. Yes.
All right. Just checking. Other questions at this point? Michael? Thanks, Michael. Public comment on this audit? Any public comment on this audit? Okay. This is at the point of the auditors, the recommendation from city auditor to recommend McDonald and Associates. Okay. Now, a couple of weeks ago, when we were here, I felt like there was discussion about the payment on the loan origination fee and loan interest costs for the Rock Chalk Park development. And, and I wanted to make sure, because we had, we had some pretty strong language, I thought, a couple of weeks ago about, you know, at this point, about not spending additional funds at this time until this audit is complete. You know, gentlemen, to be very honest with you, based on, based on everything, I think it is extremely appropriate, you know, that, I say that we stand behind that, and that we don't make those payments, but I wanted to give us the opportunity to have that discussion if it was the belief of the commission that, that was to be considered, you know, at this point, because I know that there was quite a bit of discussion at that point. Okay.
The only, I made the comment a couple of weeks ago, and I still feel the same way, is that the legal, or not the legal fees, the loan interest is the loan interest. I mean, it's not going to be, if anything, it may go up by the fact that we're taking more time to pay it, I'm not sure about that, but seems like that was a finite amount that was established that, I don't think the audit's going to change it, because it's, it's a mathematical computation of, of the amount of money borrowed and the length of time that they had it out, so, you know, I like to get bills paid when they're due. That's part of my philosophy in life, is pay stuff when you owe it, and we owe it, unless somebody here has information as to, if it should be a different amount, or if we might not owe it, then I'd wait. And that's my only thought, is that on that item, it's a very finite, definable amount, and the staff has reviewed it and said this is what it should be, so I'm of the opinion it's a bill we owe, and we should pay it.
Loan interest and loan origination?
Well, those two things, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think we ought to consider also the professional engineering fees. Those three items, to me, are not going to change. We're never going to, we don't have an itemized, ability to itemize those. We do know that they're within a reasonable amount predicted. We know that the company was a reputable company that did the architectural bid. It was a bid, it wasn't kept by hours, so we're not going to get any more information from that. I don't see any benefit of holding that back. I do have concerns about legal fees and would not recommend putting those forward, even though I recommend the other three, because we already know that there are some items that we've taken back and not paid because they didn't seem appropriate to us. And I would like verification that these are appropriate. I would like to see that the legal fees are documented. I don't think there's any conflict of interest between the person who gave the legal advice and the people that bought that legal advice, because we're not asking what the advice is, we're just asking that they verify that they had the phone call or whatever they did at that time. So I think the legal fees, I will, will not vote for at any time until I get that information. And the other three, to me, we owe it, and my thought, my theory in life is if you owe money, pay it, and I think we have enough evidence that these are accurate, and the best evidence we're going to get is that they're accurate, and I think we should go ahead and proceed with those three.
I agree.
Jerome?
Tony, can I ask you a question? The, on the professional engineering fees, the memo from Dave says that we've got documentation essentially on a couple of different things. RCP says it does not have and therefore cannot provide itemized billing for the legal fees and the professional fees. And you, you had stated that you were, you really were in need of more of the itemized billing for the legal fees, but I don't know that I ever asked you about the professional fees. Would you like to see itemized billing for the professional fees, or is it standard practices for the city to not do that?
It's my understanding from Chuck that there are projects, and even the city has been involved in projects, where engineering fees are paid on a flat fee, and there is no hourly breakdown of tasks. We have requested documentation, they said that don't, that doesn't exist. I'm not sure if it is appropriate to ask them to create something that they don't normally produce. Furthermore, on the, on the fees, the professional fees, you know, Chuck's memo did examine them and compare them to what we have authorized in our purchasing policy, and they are within that range. And furthermore, the, I guess, the work product is demonstrated by the plans that the professional engineers have provided. So all of that combined with Chuck's review and confirmation, I believe that that is the documentation that is available.
Okay, thanks. I mean, here's, here's where I'm at, you know, I think that, I think that we need to put something in, in writing, in an ordinance, in a policy, because at a general review, I'd asked Chuck the same question, is it standard practice? Or not the same question, but a similar question, is it standard practice for us to not get itemized stuff? And he said, well, I mean, sometimes. And if this is going to be something that, I mean, I think it's, I think it would have saved a lot of hassle and trouble if we would have gotten those types of things, and, and so what I would like to see is something in our, in our purchasing policies requesting upfront that we have itemized billings for, for engineering fees, professional fees, legal fees, et cetera. That way, there's no question and everything's above reproach. And if that's done from the beginning, you know, it doesn't leave the 10% or 20%, in all fairness to, to this group, I mean, we, you know, we should have put that in the development agreement, and we didn't, and that's our fault, not theirs. And so what I would like to do is see us be proactive in putting something in our policies that will proactively deal with these potential issues and perhaps mitigate them in the future, so that we don't have to come back here and have a conversation like this again about wanting documentation that we didn't ask for in the beginning when, when we should have had the foresight to ask for it. So, I mean, that's, those are, those are my thoughts on the matter.
Well, this is a question for the engineering staff, legal staff. It's my understanding that certain professions just bill a flat fee, like architects might take a certain percent of a whole project, and if it's a, if it's a million-dollar project, the architect's fees could be between 6% and 8% or 10% if it has a lot of design to it. Is that, is that not a true way that the trade, some of the trades do that?
Some of the trades do do that, but I don't think it's necessarily inappropriate that we couldn't ask for that information. I mean, that's industry standard for some of those trades, but it doesn't mean that we couldn't ask for it, because it's got to be there at some point.
Great, thanks.
So Chuck, remember when we had our discussion about engineering fees, preferential choice, you know, and some of the standards? I want to make sure all the commissioners understand some of the standards of practice that we follow as it relates to engineering, because I wasn't aware of it at the time until we brought it up, and I was complaining about constantly using the same engineering firm and not seeking competitive bids and not asking for itemized estimates and bids for projects. It's a pretty common question, why don't you just make it clear to people how things work in the state of Kansas and in our normal projects as it relates to how we pick qualified consultants?
We select consultants based on qualifications. We're out right now for requests for qualifications for Castle. After we select the consultant based on the qualifications, then we will negotiate the scope and the dollar amount. Doesn't mean that we can't move on if we're not happy with the dollar amount or fee, or the scope, and if we can't come to terms, we can do that, but typically that will be our standard procedure, and that's what our policy says, too. We do have guidelines that set out what the maximum fees should be, but there's a lot of details, a lot of technical issues to any specific question that aren't contained in those generalizations for percentages. State projects are a little bit harder, you know, because there's a lot more paperwork, so if there are plus or minus a little bit on what our policy says, you know, we take a look at that, and we make those recommendations to the commission based on our experience.
So can I? So, again, I was looking for competitive bidding. So, can I, so, again, I was looking for competitive bidding, you told me that that's really not how we do things, and it's really outside of the professional practices, decorum, blah, 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 you know, that sort of thing, as it relates to engineering and those types of practices. And, you know, I'm always looking for the best possible price. I was wanting to try to be more competitive, and I think you made it clear to me how we operate. You have guidelines as far as percentage of project goes, you supplied four examples of percentage of projects in this memo, you had a 9, a 7, a 5, and a 9% of the construction costs, which the average, weighted average is 7.5% of the project cost is a typical, is the average engineering cost associated with the examples you gave us in this memo. The engineering fees for Rock Chalk Park, for the infrastructure amounted to .054%, which is 4 tenths of a percent higher than the lowest, but 2% lower than the average. So, I guess what I'm asking is, the original estimates for this seem in line with what your policy is. I was looking for itemized documentation, so that we could be consistent with professional fees, I was requesting and demanding it, from what I hear, that wasn't how it was negotiated. Is it common for you to be able to be provided this documentation subsequent to a contract and subsequent to the work? Is it normal? Have you ever asked for all their hourly rates, and all their timesheets for this kind of work?
As we work through the scope, that's when we would get that.
Oh, on the front end, but I'm talking on the back end. Have you ever gone through and said, hey, we want to see how you arrived at this number?
No, because we usually, if we want it on the front end, we would have usually got it on the front end.
How often do you ask for it on the front end? An itemized list of engineering costs?
Most of our projects run that way, because we're dealing with engineering-type projects. It would be more so along in the architectural side of the profession.
But those numbers usually fall within the range that I just stated, between 5% and 9% is what you're seeing.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, even if we went through and itemized, and you provided, would you say that this number is reasonable? I mean, I guess, after looking at all the notes that I received, I'm not sure if what we would, by withholding this money, which is what I was proposing before, but now I see where our numbers are at and where they're at, I don't see what justification we have for withholding it, if it's actually, the average has been 7.5% of our city projects, and this one comes in at 4.5, at 5.4%. I just, I guess I'm wondering, I mean, if it was exceeding this standard, then I can see we want to, you know, that's a red flag, but I guess I'm trying to figure out how we justify withholding payment, and asking for an itemized bill after the fact, and I'm with Jeremy, in all future projects, I think we should demand an itemized estimate, so that we can compare actual costs after the project, if there's any questions, but I, I, I guess I didn't-
Yeah, the percentage is well within our guidelines, and, you know, something that we tend to see.
Well, it's even on the low end of our guidelines, let's, I think that needs to be stated, after the four projects you just showed me, within the last couple, you know, 18 months, so.
Mike, plus, Bob, plus, it's very, very close to the original estimate, estimate that was made in the development agreement. That's where everybody sat down and said, here's what we think it's going to cost, so it's within $20,000 of that number. So it's not, it's not way out of bounds, I mean, it's just, and I'm sure that engineering things crept up during the design of it, that would require more time, or more overhead for the engineering firms. But I think that's a pretty close estimate, if you estimate 525,000, it comes out 555,000, of which, we're not going to pay all that anyway, because we cap out.
Right, that's all.
And so, it's a matter of beating this to death one more time, you know?
Right, so, that's, I originally wanted to withhold payment on engineering, I want to make sure it's clear, that that was my rationale, and when I got these documents and saw where we fell, and looked at it over the break, I didn't see any reason to withhold it any longer.
Okay, other questions? Tony, could I ask you a question? On the, on the interest, on the interest that we're being asked to pay, on, well, the loan interest on the project, on the infrastructure part that we have left, outstanding. The question that I have is, is that the interest that was derived, you and I talked about, oh, the, on page two of Dave's recommendation, and it talks about how the, how we derived the figure of the $341,000 for the interest that is to be paid. The question that I have is, is that one of the reasons that I believe that the audit and an auditor coming in and being able to review all of this information, my particular belief here is, is because there's all, there's, you know, there's a KU portion out there, there's the rec center portion, there is the portion of the infrastructure that is there, and I just want to make sure, and do we have information that is significant, based on everything that you've seen, is the information that we have, is it significant in being able to make the determination that that interest for those loans was for the infrastructure on just what we were required to pay? And that's my concern. Or is it just to be able to come under, to fit the figures for the cap amount that we have as the agreement on the development agreement?
The city relied on the documentation that RCP provided when we asked for justification on the loan interest payments. And the KU Endowment Association provided a letter and some documentation from Emprise Bank, that said that those, that those documents demonstrated that the loan interest payments were for the infrastructure, the city's portion of the infrastructure project. The Emprise documents, if you look at them, it just, it doesn't have a column for a loan for any work that Bliss may have done for the Endowment Association, I'm sorry, for the athletic department, and then the city infrastructure separate. It is, it is sort of a blended document, as far as I can tell. That is why, when the city manager and I were reviewing it, we calculated, or we recommended that the interest payment be calculated based on the city's cap for the infrastructure, which was lower than the amount that they had requested payment for. We also backed out expenses that were on the Emprise Bank statement, that were related, that were incurred before the city and RCP had executed the development agreement for the infrastructure. So it was our attempt to take the documentation that we had been provided, and pay the amount that would be appropriate for the city's portion of the infrastructure payment.
Okay, so, as you and I talked earlier, also, that that final draw was done in the May timeframe, and that the bill was not presented until September, that interest there, which was 40-plus thousand dollars, was that, is that still in the amount, or has that been removed?
The documentation was provided in September, because that is when the, you know, they certified that the project was complete. It is my understanding, and I'll have to go back and recalculate, but it's my understanding that those later interest payments are not included.
They are not?
They are not included.
Okay. Well, it just seems to me, if there's a question on the interest that's paid, why would we pay it this evening? And that's my particular belief, but.
We'll take the commission's question.
Thank you.
Just one last statement, and that is, I think Tony made some good statements about the fact that the legal fees are, appear to be appropriate, that the documentation that they do have seems to support that, and under a regular situation, that would be okay. But this is not your regular situation, this is in a unique situation, and I think we need to go beyond what we would typically do to show that. And so, for that reason, even though I respect her recommendations, that would be fine on a regular item that we were looking at, it's not okay for here, and I think we need to go further and document even better with the actual information from the lawyers about their billing practices that they had.
Okay. And at the meetings that we had early on, several weeks ago, right before the holiday, you know, we were given the authority that we can go to the office with our auditor to investigate those legal fees, so. Okay, so, other questions or comments on these items? Public comment on the payments? Any public comment on the payments? Okay, back to the commission.
Just, Mike, Mayor, just to point out, if we pay the loan origination fee, the loan interest, the professional engineering fees, that will cap us out. Which, the city's obligated to pay up to another $1,92,970.77, that's my understanding. The two, the loan origination fee and professional, will put you at a little over a million, and then the loan origination fee would be a million, one, which will cap you, which will put you over the cap?
The loan origination that we are recommend, or that was recommended in December 2nd memo, was 158,000, a little bit more.
Correct.
The loan interest is an adjusted amount, based on that calculation that I explained earlier, which was, I believe, 341,746.
Okay, I was using 449.
Yeah, that is the request, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't recommend paying that, rather paying the adjusted amount, based on the lower principal on our infrastructure payment, and then the professional fees at 555,198, for a total of 1,55,588.52. That leaves approximately, or that leaves exactly 37,382.25 before we reach the cap. And legal fees are not paid.
So, back to the commission. There's two different items. One is hire a, the recommended auditor, McDonald and Associates, as recommended by the city auditor, and negotiate a scope of service and payment, maximum amount of payment on that, for the date of approximately February 17th, I believe, is the date, is recommended. We can do that. And then also, the second part would be to pay the fees as outlined, in the city manager's December 2nd memo.
Okay, so-
I would suggest that we do these in two-
Individual?
Yeah.
So there's, so we need to have a motion to authorize a construction audit review of the Rock Chalk Park infrastructure, with an extended date of February 17th, or that which is arrived at mutually between Michael Glinsky and the auditing firm, which is somewhere in between that date, of what we originally estimated? I would like to give him flexibility, if there's some sort of, but the sooner the better, without rushing them.
Okay, did you want to include a maximum payment amount?
Of $20,000, based on the original estimate, in a short time period?
Plus the cost of travel, and those type of things?
Correct.
Okay.
Second?
Is that a motion and a second? Mike, yours was a motion.
Yes, that was a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, to approve the recommendation of the city auditor for McDonald and Associates, and to direct negotiations begin with that firm before the audit of Rock Chalk Park infrastructure payments, infrastructure portion of the project, and to extend the date, the final date, to approximately February 17th, for the maximum amount of $20,000 in fee, plus travel and other expenses. A motion was made by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Reardon, all in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 5-0. Next item before us, then, appropriate is to authorize the payments to RCP LLC for the loan origination fee, the loan interest costs for Rock Chalk Park. Was it also to include the professional engineering fees?
Yeah, so we're talking about a motion to approve the payment of the revised amount of loan origination, loan interest, and professional engineering fees. I don't know what the total is, but I'm sure somebody can total that for us, if you need to. It's listed on the memo.
Tony totaled it, it was 1,55,588.52.
But based on documentation provided, I would make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
The only thing, the only thing I will say, that will make me go along with this, is if we, if we direct staff to put something on our agenda at a later point-
Yes.
-stating that we request itemized billing upfront, for any future projects related to architecture, engineering fees, et cetera, so that we're not back here having this conversation again about the next project.
I would amend my motion to include that request.
And I would amend my second to include that request.
Okay. So, we have a motion made in second to approve the loan origination fee, the loan interest fee, the professional engineering fees to be paid to RCP LLC for our shared infrastructure payment, on that particular part of the, as recommended in the December 2nd. City managers will report to the commission. That motion was made by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Shum, as amended to include language, and Vice Mayor, I believe, that it's very good language, but understand, I don't believe we ought to repay those, even with the attachment. Here again, motion was made by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Shum. All in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, that passes 4-1. Mayor Amickson, dissension.
So that check will then be on your claims next Tuesday?
Right, got it.
You haven't voted for any of it, so it would be hypocritical for you to include that motion.
I would recommend, yes, we do not put it on claims?
So-
We put it down as an agenda item?
Regular agenda item.
A regular agenda item, in case someone wants to come down and-
I'm just holding out for you.
Yeah, I know, okay.
Right, we'll just do it, as a claim payment, like we did before.
Okay. So that, that check will be placed on part of the regular claims next week, correct?
Well, it will be a claim that we're having it paid on the regular agenda.
Okay, that's it, okay, just make it check.
Correct, on the regular agenda.
Got it, okay. Next item is general public comment, and I know that we had somebody that asked me to speak this evening, and this, let me talk for about five minutes. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, my name is Tom Peterson. Let me get this connected up, and I will show you some pretty pictures. Okay, my name is Tom Peterson, I'm a professor at KU, and normally, I do this sort of stuff with biology, but I do quite a bit of geographic analysis in the course of my work. You'll recall some discussion a few weeks ago, that was beginning to explore an alternative site for a downtown grocery store. And I got thinking about what the two sites that have been discussed might mean in terms of achieving the goals of providing quality grocery store service to different sectors of our community that are- of our community that are currently not provided. Now, this is referring to the, the food desert status that I'm sure none of us is proud of for, actually, right here. So essentially, what I did was I went into the USDA's sites, and I took advantage of some GIS data, indeed, that the city of Lawrence provides, and I put together a bit of an analysis. I can provide this to you all if you're interested. But essentially, I'll walk you through about five slides. This is a map of Lawrence, and the yellow circles that you can see are the existing grocery stores, and the black dashed line is a one-mile radius around those stores. Essentially, the USDA defines food deserts in two ways. One is in terms of poverty, and the other is in terms of access. And so we're focusing on the access criterion here. And they define access, the last time they did this, in a couple ways. One is a mile, essentially thinking about walking access. And the other is a calculation of three minutes by vehicle, and I'll show you both of those. So anyhow, this is a one-mile radius around the existing grocery stores. And you see these two yellow stars right here. Those are our two candidate sites. And so downtown is this area, and here is North Lawrence up here. So then, essentially, I overlaid the census block data. If I can give you all some recommendations, don't ever try to play with US Census data, it's a mess. I got very lucky that the state of Kansas had processed the data already. But essentially, where you're seeing dark blue is highest density of people, and where you're seeing light blue is lowest densities. But essentially, we can focus in on the key area, which is the downtown region. Here's that one-mile radius, so this line here is essentially responding to the Mass Street Dillons, and this line is responding to the Merck in this area. And that essentially defines this corner of Lawrence that's not being served. And then here are our two candidate sites, the Allen Press site at 11th and Mass, and the Borders site, and this is a one-mile radius around each of them. Okay? So this is really half of the end of the story. Those are Lawrence's addresses, and I could give you population data, but the addresses are actually more detailed than the population data because the census data are reported block by block. And essentially, what you can see is that the Allen Press site, the 11th and Mass site, really doesn't get across the river. It just barely gets over to the Levy Trail area, whereas the Borders site gets quite a bit farther into North Lawrence. And that really is the crux of the difference between the two. And then thanks to a colleague up at KU who does business-related GIS, I certainly don't, but I was able to get the calculations for three-minute access by vehicle. And so you can see how this kind of lines up along the major streets. But the Allen Press site serves within three, a three-minute reach. This green area plus this turquoise area that I'm outlining right there. So it's essentially this area, and again, it kind of gets cross-shaped because of the big avenues. Whereas the Borders site serves this area, you can see it overlaps very broadly with the Allen Press site, but then goes farther west into the Pinckney area and gets across the river into the North Lawrence area. So that's just a couple visuals for you. Existing grocery stores serve about half of Lawrence's people if you use the one-mile radius. The Borders location does quite a bit better job of reaching North Lawrence, both based on the one-mile radius criterion and the three-minute drive criterion. Now, I suspect you'll then turn around and ask me, does this get us off the food desert list? And the answer is, it's hard to tell, because the USDA has been experimenting with a whole series of new criteria. Not only will the population data change, obviously, but what we're clearly going to see is they're playing with a half-mile radius, they're playing with a mixture of poverty and population, so it's very hard to replicate. I was a bit disappointed that I couldn't follow their formulas exactly because I basically haven't made them available.
Tom, you did say that you would share that information with us, that would be great. Also, I want to thank you, and I know that you had asked, and David asked about presenting that to us this evening because you're leaving, going to be gone here shortly, so I appreciate you being able to bring that in and share it with us, okay?
My pleasure.
You bet. Is there other comment on, yeah, other public comment?
Mr. Mayor, I'm Joshua Montgomery, owner, operator, Winklevoss Road. Hey, I was just, wanted to stop in and ask about the progress on our economic development request. The Pitch had done a really nice article this past week about our project, and it kind of detailed things. And as a result, I was reading back through Chad's coverage of the project, a number of different stories indicating that a decision would be made in October, and then November, and then December. And then we talked about three weeks ago and indicated that we would be on the agenda here on the 13th. I guess I got some correspondence today that calls that into, into question as well, so are we talking about February as a, as a decision timeline? I'm just, I got a lot of correspondence.
You're actually on my list to bring up under commission items, as we talk about future agenda items also, so...
Okay.
Anyway, stick around, we'll get you an answer on that real quick, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other general public comment? Okay. Future agenda items. Dave?
Well, we've added some items to next week's agenda, setting the bid date on the wastewater treatment plant, the Rock Chalk Park payment on the regular agenda. We'll probably have a few other items here as well. I have not heard from Diane, but I believe that the NEA grant information will be available to go. I know that, had some discussions on the Ninth Street corridor project, and that may be available to go next week as well. So I know Commissioner Shum has had some discussions with some citizens, so...
Yeah, it may be. I'll let you know late tomorrow.
Okay. So in all fair...
And then on Joshua's question, thank you. Diane did send an email where she has been in correspondence with Julianne Havish, the consultant that we have used in the past, and looks like she should be able to get something by January the 20th, is what Diane indicated. She said, Ms. Havish had illness, some holidays issues, but I know that she's working on the questions that you've asked the consultant to look at. That's the information that I have.
Okay. I think we're ready. We can go ahead and put this item on the agenda, don't you? Was the information critical that we needed at this point to make a decision on Mr. Montgomery's request?
Well, part of it was related to the...
It was going to be her views on the common carrier.
Common carrier idea, which is what was directly related to Joshua's request.
That's true.
Whether or not there's a...
That's true, I forgot about that part.
Yeah.
So we can have it by the 20th? Joshua, when you leaving?
I don't...
Oh, that's right, yes.
I don't like it, but, I mean, if we can get a firm date and nail it down, I'd be amenable to doing it late January, early February. I just want to make sure that we nail a date down and...
If she can give us information by the 20th?
Well, Diane asked her to confirm that she could have something to us on the 20th. And that's us getting the report on the 20th. It's not enough time to necessarily digest it all. So that's a Tuesday, so...
So we can either do it the 27th, or we can do it the following week, which is one of the third or seventh.
Third. Twenty-seventh is the next one after that, and then the third.
If we could do it at the 27th and have set the policy as the first agenda item and set our economic development request as the second agenda item, and get a vote up, down, one way or the other, that allows us to move on, so...
If that's your direction, that's what we'll, we'll tell the consultant you have to have it by then.
Want to do that?
Sure.
Let's do that.
You receive it on the 20th?
Yep.
Post it?
Think we can do that.
For the 27th acceptance?
We'll make that decision then. Okay?
That's for us.
Yep. Fair enough. All right. Any other future agenda items?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commission items?
I have one little itty-bitty thing here called Sports Lawrence Pavilion, Pavilion Lawrence. You got a, a email from Dave Corliss about the attendance, the number of people who've signed up. We now have over thirteen thousand citizens that belong, have a, have a key that allows them to use the facility. An interesting statistic is that the 44 ZIP code is the second-largest group of people that's using the facility, and that there's seventy-four to fifty-seven women over men that are using it. And the other thing that's interesting to me is the average age is forty-point-five-two, so it's not all kids, it's a lot of, a lot of adults that are out there using it. I was out there Saturday and Sunday, I just had to see the, the two tournaments, there were two different tournaments. On Saturday, they had eighty teams, volleyball teams, and it was very, very loud in there because they were teenage girls who get into their volleyball.
Oh, yeah.
In addition to that, there were soccer being played, there was some sandlot basketball, and the whole thing was just filled with people. It was really amazing. And so staff, I've tried to visit out there several times, and staff seems like it has it very well organized, it's, it's, looks like it's being run very well. Comments from people are saying they're very, very happy with the facility and how it's working out, so I think it's, I think those numbers are great, they're, they're almost overwhelming. Yeah, I've got my two. Terry has his key card, but, so I guess those people that all lined up and testified that said there was a great need for this were right, and that's, that's the bottom line of this. We heard from lots and lots of people that said we're way behind on recreational facilities, and that's proving it to me, the number of people who are signed up using that thing, so, thanks to all recreation, Parks and Recreation staff.
Was it like fifty-nine thou, averaged fifty-nine thousand visits a month or something like that?
Here, I got it right here.
Sixty-two thousand in December, sixty-three thousand in November.
I think I averaged, it was like fifty-nine thousand.
Well, and probably in December, you're close, maybe a day or two for the holidays. But, yeah, that's, that's a lot of people.
That's attendance, that's...
Yeah.
Right.
Once two thousand people a day, average.
The park, the parking lot, all, almost the entire parking lot was full...
Yeah.
On, on Saturday.
Yeah. We didn't build it big enough, I don't think.
Not in the infrastructure.
Other things?
Let's, let's bring, let's talk about an addition here in the next couple weeks. Oops, no, we won't hear that.
Other commission items?
Kind of have a little humor in this stuff.
Okay, calendar?
Mayor, Commissioners, sent you some possible dates that looked like they were available on community calendars for the listing sessions that you requested on future police facility needs. One of them would be next Wednesday, January the 14th, in this meeting room, and the other one would be Thursday, January the 29th, in the theater at the Art Center, 6:30. Mayor, you indicated that the agenda is basically introductions and then allowing the public to speak, so we're not preparing...
And I think it's...
...in PowerPoint or anything, we're just...
Yeah, I think it's our opportunity to, you know, get feedback from the public on, you know, we, we went through this whole, most of last year, talking about an election on, you know, a sales tax for a police facility, and, you know, obviously, it didn't pass, but, you know, it was pretty close. And one of the things that I think it's important for all of us to be able to find out is, what are the things that we, you know, we really did right, and some of the things that, you know, weren't quite up to, you know, the part that the public wanted to see. So give us this time to just really sit back and be able to listen. Vice Mayor had an idea yesterday about maybe having a facilitator come in and being able to, you know, work with us and handle, you know, the meeting, but, you know, I really want it to be something that people can just, you know, be able, you know, talk about the project and kind of work where we head, you know, at this point. But we're really, you know, and, and I don't want to say in a start, start-over position, but we're in a position right now where, you know, let's, you know, we, I still say the need is there. It's, you know, it is really there, as we talk about our evidence storage and, and, you know, the needs that we have with all kinds of things, but, you know, we really need to open it up and talk about this project and see where we can do better at. So that's the deal. Okay? So, that, any other calendar items? We got legislative breakfast.
We're proceeding with those dates, then.
Okay, yep, yep. Those dates, fine. Everybody's okay with that, and the locations. Okay? And then, Dave, the legislative breakfast Thursday morning at eight o'clock?
You all are registered for it?
And it was great yesterday morning with the Police Foundation's AED presentation. That's super. Have organization like the Foundation steps up and, and works with our police department to help find things that, you know, need to help, you know, everybody in the community. Terry, thank you for you and your practice and participation in providing something that, well, I hope I never need. Anyway, okay, anything else on calendar, then?
Is, is the, it says the listing session is on January 14th, January 29th, at 6:30. Six thirty on both dates?
Uh-huh.
Yes, unless you direct us to the other one.
No, I just wanted to make sure, just...
Those are the ones.
Yeah.
Five forty-five. Okay. Any other calendar items? Not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
Motion made in second to adjourn, made by Commissioner Shum, seconded by Commissioner Dever. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned. Thank you all.